In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAN and may be recorded by other local media. I also will say that we just, we were just told by NORCAN that the stream, the TV stream is not working tonight, so zoom in virtually if you want to participate or see what we're doing. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Ms. Goberna, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, the first agenda item was a matter of surprise by one who did it at last week's meeting with regard to the community, specifically the determination altered to an unfunded mandate, state auditor, concerning zoning. There was an initial analysis that was provided by Town House, like a packet last week, I think I emailed last week the packet. For tonight's meeting, I asked Town House, John Ickman, if they could join us and sort of speak to the issues. I don't know if my accessory can just give a brief summary of what we're communicating by email and sort of the lay of the land, and then the board can have a discussion. I will note, we advertised this to allow for executive session should it prove to be necessary as a matter of litigation. It doesn't mean that it necessarily needs to take place in executive session. I know, I'm sure that there are folks who would prefer to discuss it in open session. I fully understand that. We posted it in this way, just in case.
And I'll only add, when we get into the Q and A part for Mr. Ickman, for anybody on the board, because depending on future meeting and if we discuss it and it goes into litigation, let's just, let's be cognizant of what we say, just because if we end up in that, we don't, you know, we don't want this meeting to come back to bite us. It's diagonal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, on February 21st, and this is recapping essentially what you have heard from us to this point, the State Auditor's Office, and specifically a division devoted to local mandates, issued an opinion or determination. They issued this in response to requests by three different communities. Methuen is one of those. They addressed their determination to Methuen, but there were two other communities, I believe Rentham was one, and I forget, I'm not sure what the third one was.
Middleborough.
Middleborough, correct, thank you. All three communities asked pursuant to a statute for a determination of whether the MBTA zoning act was an unfunded mandate. What that means simply is that the legislature has adopted an act that imposes financial obligations on a town without funding those obligations. That's a specific statute. It's a piece of what's essentially known as Proposition Two and a Half. It's a funding, funding provision. Should I be paying attention to the?
No.
Okay. What the determination was, simply was that according to the auditor's office, they believed that the MBTA zoning is an unfunded mandate. They gave their reasoning. What they have not done to this point is they have not determined what those costs would be. So there are two pieces to this. One, is it an unfunded mandate? And if it is, what costs have been imposed on municipalities? Because the purpose of an unfunded mandate law is that the law cannot be effective until the costs are appropriated by the legislature, or the legislature exempts itself from the unfunded mandate law, which it can do and has not done yet. So what the auditor said is, we are continuing to gather information about these costs, and we will issue a determination of what those costs are for every city and town. Now, they did not give us a timeframe as to how that would happen or when it would happen. They did indicate that they are waiting in part for EOHLC, the state agency in charge of implementing MBTA zoning, for them to file their required financial statements that have to go along with promulgating regulations. As you know, they have, they have emergency regulations that were put in place in January. Those have a 90-day timeframe. They have moved forward and asked for comments on final regulations. That comment period has ended. I expect those regulations to be published within the next 30 days. We don't have a timeframe yet. During that time, I assume the auditor is going to try to come out with those figures. We don't know what those will be. I can say that it might be very different for different communities. It's hard to say. The guidance and the opinion about how they're going to make that determination cost is not very specific, so we don't know what they're going to take into account. I think, I don't have anything else in particular, so one thing I wanted to emphasize here, this is a determination, it's not legally binding. If a town wanted protection from enforcement of the MBTA zoning, if they were not in compliance, the town would need to go file a suit in Superior Court asking to be protected from implementation of the act. Middleborough has just done that. I'm sure if you've seen the news, Middleborough has filed a complaint in Superior Court asking for that protection. There's going to be a hearing on March 7th on their motion for a preliminary injunction. They have asked for that relief in addition to other types of relief related to MBTA zoning, so it's not specifically just unfunded mandate. Other towns I know are considering it. Middleborough, it's important to point out, is not in interim compliance right now. They would potentially be subject to immediate enforcement by the Attorney General's Office. North Reading is in interim compliance. Other communities are considering whether they want to seek protection. Many of those are in interim compliance, some are not. So that's where we stand at this point. North Reading's timeline for coming into compliance now under the emergency regulations is, I believe, July 14th, anticipating obviously that if zoning is going to be adopted, it will be for this, this fiscal year.
So, I'm going to go around, anybody has questions? So, if, so when the auditor comes out, and let's say municipality X, it's 100,000, I'm just making numbers up, okay? In respect of that July deadline, would they be exempt from enforcement until they were reimbursed? Or the legislature accept, so the legislature can at any point accept themselves from this?
Correct.
Like even after the fact?
Yes.
Isn't that nice?
Of course.
But assuming they don't do that, then how does the process work? So like, again, let's just use North Reading. Let's say what we are right now, right? In respect of whether or not we've become more compliant than we need to. If the auditor says, well, it's going to cost North Reading a quarter million dollars to actually do this, right? Does it just like kind of get put on hold until we get a check? How does that work?
No, so it could get put on hold. So the key here is that, again, you just have a determination, it's an opinion of the auditor's office. If you want legal protection, you would have to follow up and go to Superior Court, ask the court to make a determination that this is an unfunded mandate, and ask the court to stay enforcement of that against the town.
Okay. So that's what, okay.
That's what Middleborough is doing now.
Right. Ms. Gonzalez?
I had read that you could file an exemption, which would be different from what Middleborough was doing. Middleborough's going a little further, aren't they? I think they're in a different situation. I thought that we could just file an exemption.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of that process, so we could, North Reading could go the same route that Middleborough, Rentham, and Methuen already followed, which is building the state auditor's division and ask for a determination as to North Reading. But we wouldn't see that that would be tremendously productive at this point, given that the state auditor has already given their opinion about the entire MBTA zoning act. We would assume that would be the same, and they're going to make a determination about costs, they said, for every community. So it wouldn't appear that we would need to do that to learn anything further that we don't already know. The only, the only way I'm aware that we could obtain legal protection from enforcement by the state of the MBTA zoning act would be to go to Superior Court. But again, right now, there is, we are in compliance. We will be until July 14th.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I have something here. The auditor's determination gives communities an opportunity, the municipality, or even just 10 taxpayers, can petition the Superior Court for an exemption.
That's the lawsuit I'm talking about.
So, but I thought they were going further than that, because I thought just this would just be more simple, just filing an exemption.
No, it is the amount of filing such as a complaint in Superior Court, such as Middleborough has done. Middleborough has asked for additional relief in term other than just staying the unfunded mandate, but it would require filing a complaint in Superior Court.
Just a question. So Middleborough is March 7th?
That's the hearing on the preliminary injunction.
And so, any idea how long it would take to come back to some sort of determination of that?
Well, at this point, it would be, the Superior Court would have to make a ruling on that motion. It would be good from the bench, but there's no timeline for how the court makes that. Of course, we still have the state agency out there saying they're still making determinations of our costs. Whether that figure into the Superior Court's ruling on this, we don't know. So there's no guarantee that we're going to have a ruling on March 7th.
And then if we were to push it right to the end and say we go to July 13th by Superior Court, and is that by a support time?
Assuming that at that point, the state has an act somehow to address determination, and the court hasn't said anything about an unfunded mandate to that point, I would assume at that point, it would still be open to us to file a suit to seek protection. Because what we believe is true, we'll have to show if the Superior Court has an unfunded mandate, it cannot be applied to us until that unfunded aspect is taken care of, and the state exempts itself or they appropriate money.
Are they going to be looking for, the auditor doesn't have a number for us yet, right? Are they going to be looking, it's like, so do Middleborough have to go there with like, like an estimated number from somebody, you know, that maybe their town planner or somebody came up with? Is that what they did? Or did they just, they needed, you need the number?
They did not. So they threw, they, correct word would be, they estimated some potential cost of development in the town. They did not really specifically address costs related to what they had to do to bring themselves into compliance in the zoning act. They, the law says that if the auditor determines the cost, that that will be a prima facie case when you go to Superior Court. In other words, that would be taken by the court to be true until it's proven otherwise. That has not been done yet, so Middleborough can bring in that evidence in this suit, but it hasn't, it's a lead, some broad figures, and it's not the lead specific figures.
Okay. So they're pretty much just asking for, one way or the other, it's going to be unfunded. So give us the exemption now, so no one can go after us, because they don't even have that period like we do.
Correct.
Right? So that's what they're trying to say, like, this is the way, okay. And then they'll go back when they get the number, if that it even applies.
Correct. At that point, there's, again, the option of the state, it still is the option right now, is do we appropriate money for this? What will the court do?
First of all, the state's principle is determined the law is constitutional. The law is still in place. There's just this unfunded mandate issue that needs to be resolved. The law is in order to be again, and communities were still committed to compliance, or, so the Superior Court, which is below the state's, isn't going to determine whether it's constitutional or not, it's already been determined. It's just a question of, can the community be exempted from enforcement action? Unless until the legislature changes the law, funds, funds the mandate, but doesn't get them off the hook.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so the best that they can hope for, at least Middleborough's a little bit different situation, because they didn't meet the February deadline. They're hoping to just stay in action between, they know July. Other communities may not be in compliance, a large number of other communities probably. So if that's unlitigious, is some potential right now for any potential action to be taken immediately?
Correct. And, this is the primary, one thing I should mention, Middleborough, maybe, particularly Middleborough, they're also looking for protection or state grants, they believe they've already been awarded, that the state has said we're not going to give to you, so that they're asking for that grant fund, so there may be some urgency there out in the town.
Because if you feel like right now, the state is not in compliance with the law as far as mandates, they can leave, that works, that's, please. So the law is in the air, it's changing the law. So, I don't see, just my initial reaction the other day, when I signed that rental letter, I don't see any benefit for us to be spending the taxpayer's money to file suit for exemption. First of all, we're not, we're not compliant at this point, so we don't need an exemption yet. So there's other communities that are, those are the steps. Those bases are not going to be necessarily town-specific. It's going to be MBTA community-specific. It's good for one town, either one town is exempt or they're all exempt. You know, either the law is unforceable until the state funds it or changes the law. So why do we spend the taxpayer's money when it's already got to be adjudicated? Unless you just want to get on a list of people. The other question I have, if you can, I can't answer. The cost of the unfunded mandate, and I know the auditor's office is supposed to be determining this, I don't believe it's going to be forecasting what type of development's going to take into place, and what the cost of the infrastructure's going to be, and police and fire, public safety response is going to be. Something that may happen or may not happen tomorrow, 10 years, 20 years, or never, it's going to be what's costing the communities to go into compliance, legal opinions, staff time to research, come up with a plan, cost of a special town budget, those types of things, rather than impact of the law itself. Because the impact of this law is, is that, depending on what the property owners want to do. The only cost incurred to the town is what else do we have to do to comply, so let's get legal staff time, advertising, maybe, things like that.
Those are, those are the difficult questions that certainly Middleborough has raised up, so, in other words, what is the scope of the cost?
Correct. And the auditor's office, what I found interesting in the letter was, did not address those specific concerns of those three, three communities, which would have been a difficult thing to do. I think it was intentional on that part to leave the fabulous, because they weren't going to spend their resources until a suit is filed or that someone else determines how much work they have. By the way, I just worked it out, it's, I have an idea as to how the divisional of the mandate works. There's no sense in jumping through those hoops and making those determinations until it's determined the extent to which the state is not complying to funding the community's compliance. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that you're going to see anything from the auditor's office until the court determines the scope.
Just, Mr. Chair, just one thing.
And if everyone can speak up a little, because we have, we have whatever, if we want to call it a heater or whatever, anything a loud noise like that going, so, if everyone can speak up, I'd appreciate it.
Just one thing in reference to Mr. O'Gary's comments. The issue of whether, in fact, the auditor was correct that this is an unfunded mandate, that is squarely placed in this Middleborough complaint. It is asking the court to make that determination, and I would expect that determination to be applicable to every town and city, simply because it doesn't, it's not town-specific. The cost may be, but the fact of whether it's an unfunded mandate or not is applicable to every town and city, and they've asked the court to make that determination.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, Mr. O'Gary said, why spend taxpayer dollars? I understand what you're saying, in a broad scheme of things. If they determine that it is unfunded, it should be for everybody, but the way that I have seen things happen in the past couple of years, what if they say, well, only if you filed an exemption? I mean, they're threatening to hold rent money from us, so I feel it's not going to hurt us to file an exemption and have it in there just in case. Call me untrustworthy.
Here's how I look at it. So, I think we might be able to have the best of both worlds, because I agree that if we have to, if it starts looking like the, you know, what's going on with Middleborough is not going to be enough to get us what we need, I think we need to, it just, this is an easy one for me, because again, I've been maybe pessimistic that we were going to eventually lose to the state one way, shape, or form, but at the same time, if there is a cost to bear, whatever scope is decided, I mean, I, I think that's, that's going to get picked up, just to be fair. Like, you know, if you're, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to try and put this down my throat one way or the other, I mean, at least, you know, at least give me the little bit of silver lining that I got coming to me. That's how I'm looking at it from here. However, the only difference is that we did do that temporary kind of, you know, get out of jail free card, so if we can ride that until July, it gives a little bit more leeway, I feel like, to Ms. Gonzalez on the grant thing, because they can't really do anything about the grants right now. Starting in July, if we say no, then theoretically, they could. But at the same time, what I will say is this, what I'm going to be looking to determine, I mean, let's see what they say on Mark 7. What's nice about it is that that's in between our next two meetings, our next meeting on the, whatever date that is, 17th. But, but the point is, they, I do feel they, to Ms. Gonzalez's point, I don't want it to be something where, if it starts looking like it is not a global for everybody and everybody's going to make their case, we have the punch. That, that, you know, and again, I could maybe have changed my mind, but that's where I'm at. Because on this one, I think, again, it's a fairness thing, like, we got to do this, but no, you're going to, you can't just enforce what you want, you got to enforce this part too. I mean, you got to have it all, like, and it's not even that big, because I do think that they'll come up with the money. But, you know, maybe on this one, I will say that maybe if enough municipalities force their hand to be like, hey, do, you, we know you can do this, but when you do it, just do it right, because like, it's bad enough, we got to do it. It's worse when you find out they're like, you're really trying to get us. And that's what I feel like this one. I didn't like it when I read that. That's my own personal thing. And I've been rewinding the tape. I've been pragmatic about it, that we should have voted to just comply, because I thought we were going to lose at the end. But here, it just doesn't, yeah, it's just leaving a bad taste in my mouth, even after this very delicious whole culture up in this venue. So, I, you know, that's where I'm at, and I think that, you know, this is fairly new, we could say, it was like three weeks old, this one?
February 21st, it's led much less than that.
Okay. So, also, I do feel that if we go down that route, and I feel like I spoke too much already, but like, you know, I, I think that if we're really serious that we could end up there, less will be more talking about this. Not that we don't want to inform the public, but anytime litigation is involved, it just, you're going to show your hand. If we tell the state exactly what we're going to do right here, it's exactly the best strategy, because they're going to see. So, but, go ahead.
Let me be clear, are you saying that you don't want to file a petition right now?
I'm saying, I want to see what happens on the 7th. I mean, I, I think that's a week. I mean, if we decide to do something in two weeks, if we file now, what does that mean? We just file, I don't want to get clarification. What, what would that be?
So if you, if we had direction to basically initiate the complaint under the petition that you spoke of earlier, we would then put together a complaint, we would file it in court, and would take probably at least a week, maybe a little longer. We would want authorization from the board, obviously, if we were considered, but once we had that, we'd be drafting a specific complaint to the town for review, file it in court. Whether we wanted to ask for an initial hearing, we would have to discuss that, but basically the complaint is just drafted, filed.
Just, just to clarify, 10 residents could file this themselves, can you explain how that works?
It's called a class action suit. Basically, they would be representing members of the community, take ten actions, ten citizens do that. I have not filed a class action, so I can't attest personally how it works, but that is what the statute, statute directly can be, a town or ten citizens as a class action.
But who would pick up the cost for the class action? Those that are filed?
Yes, typically, yes, the attorneys would, if they, they're represented by council, they would, the attorneys would usually initiate, fund this, the idea being that they would then take the money that they get paid, and they would take a percentage of that. That's typically how class actions work.
I mean.
Private income?
Yes, not, not on council, no.
But if we're talking about this, and then what we initiate, but I would be much more comfortable if at the upcoming meeting, we could decide an executive session where we go through everything and get more of a, a legal strategy opinion, then then the board can vote at that point. That, that's, I mean, I'm, as soon as litigation's involved, doing this, I think not giving ourselves that opportunity, I mean, and again, I'm one member, but I think it's, I'll just, I'll just.
Just let me have Ms. Gonzalez finish her thought.
I don't know if this is protocol or not, but could the board take a vote to file the petition, but wait? Like you would hold off until we gave you the go, so that we'd be ready to go? You'd already have our vote? And then say next week, okay, let's go do it? Or you know what, let's not do it?
Certainly, the board could direct town council tonight to say, in drafting a complaint.
Sure. But we could also vote to say, yes, we, we may want to do it, so you'll have our vote, but wait until we tell you.
I think Ms. Gonzalez, what you're saying is he prepares something, and then he shows us what the actual complaint would look like in executive session.
So it's ready to go, in case we want it to be.
Mr. Waller, I'll go to your first question.
I'm just not feeling the urgency to do this, like, we have a lot of time. We have a lot of time up until July 13th to do something. I'm not saying I'm against it. Actually, the number of MBTA communities, I don't have that happen, but, but I don't see us having to take the lead here. I think other communities taking the lead is fine. They have vested reasons for doing that. We're not losing anything by not filing early, but we always have the option to file. And I think you're going to gain more experience anyways. As other communities line up, your complaint may get better as you go through the process. So again, I'm not against it, I just don't think we have to be, we don't have to be the first out to make a.
I don't think it's bad looking at the input, but hold on, let me hold my thought on that. Mr. O'Gary?
First of all, we're not out of compliance, so you can't seek an exemption from something that you're not out of compliance with. We, we don't need an exemption right now, all right? So we're not, we're not out of compliance, we're in compliance, and there's nothing to exempt us from. We just received some grant money because we are not out of compliance. We're in compliance right now. That's why we got the grants money, and that's why Middleborough didn't, that's why Middleborough did not. We got the grant money because of the extension that was provided, because of the other faux par that was made by the state as far as not going through the necessary steps to have the proper hearings and stuff, and now it's been extended to July to come into compliance. So those state grants that we were eligible for and were tenuous at best because we weren't compliant by December 31st, we are now in compliance, and we just got some money, which is great, all right? So we can't seek an exemption for something that we're in compliance with. So we can't, we can't seek an exemption until we're out of compliance, you know, and again, hometown meeting, if we have an article, it's our meeting to come into compliance, and it doesn't pass, and it doesn't pass, then we're definitely going to be out of compliance come July 13th, and we're going to have an issue to deal with. So that's the time to deal with it, because then we know we're going to be out of, out of compliance. of compliance after town meeting, after town meeting act. So, there's nothing to be, to seek an exemption from because we're still in compliance.
Wait a minute.
Can, can I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm, so we just, we don't have grants, so we're not out of compliance, we can't seek an exemption for something that we're not needing exemption for. We had just told, we had just told, we were told by our state rep and our state senator, when they were sitting right here, that we can't, and they offered a couple of, you know, reasonable amendments, and they were told for one to two sessions, which is two to four years, there's going to be no changes to these laws, they were told by their leadership. So, they, they may have to come tweak it a bit just to come into compliance as far as the state mandate, but as far as any changes to it, they said, don't even bother. And the attorney general offered an opinion on the attorney, on the auditor's...
Hold on, hold on, but Ms. O'Leary, I'm just going to, yeah, but I'm just going to stop one second. That, this, I wanted today to be pertinent to this.
It is pertinent, this.
It's not because we get, we get it, Ms. O'Leary, Ms. O'Leary, hold on, everyone, we get it, that it's, this is not changing that law.
No, 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 I know.
Now, one question I'm going to ask, because then it could maybe add this really quick. If we are already right now in compliance temporarily because we are, is it, it would just, just be a waste of paperwork? Just so...
Yeah, it's, there's a potential correct because you are in compliance now. If you filed a complaint, that the court could basically put a hold on it or even dismiss it as saying, it's not right, you are in compliance, there's no reason to go forward with this.
Can we get an answer on that? Like, maybe dig into it a little bit, unless you think that's the case now?
I think, like I said, I think my opinion is going to be, it's a possibility. I can't tell you definitely what the court's going to do. I don't think that opinion would change.
So, here, here's what I'd like to do, and then everybody can get their information.
Can I finish what I was going to say?
I'm going to let you finish, but like I said, Ms. O'Leary, I just wanted more, I didn't stop because I don't mind listening to your voice, but it's more that I just don't want to talk about what we talked about three weeks ago. We all know we have to be in compliance.
This is pertinent, but it didn't finish.
Okay.
Again, we're not out of compliance, so we can't seek an injunction or an exemption. To, to go to take it to court and say, what's your problem? You're in compliance. So, again, as far as the changes of the law, legislators hold us, it isn't going to happen. And then the attorney general issued an opinion herself right after the auditor's opinion came out. And again, it's not a complete opinion because they haven't put a dollar around on it and she is going to vigorously oppose what the auditor's office is putting forth and again, defend the legislature and the administration's position in court against the suits that have been filed. So, I think it's premature for us, I think you're wasting the taxpayers' money at this point. And again, until we come out of compliance, and again, that's June town meeting, if we take action or no action, you know, there's, there's nothing for us to do, so why are we going to waste the taxpayers' money on this? I'm not, again, if town meeting decides not to do that, you know, not to come into compliance, that's a different story. You know, then we have to try and come up with some way to stave off the penalties associated with it, but we're not there yet. It's too premature.
Okay. Here's what I like.
Can I just ask you one more question? Because I'm confused. I, I don't know about all of you listening to this. This is very confusing to me because the town voted no, right? People said, no, we don't want it. I know we came into temporary compliance, which I voted no, I think you voted no, but it, it passed. Temporary compliance, correct? But, but then it would have to be voted again in June to, to actually be in compliance. We're not actually in compliance, we're in temporary compliance because we filed a letter or something, right?
The state agency who is in charge of enforcing this has listed the town North Reading as being in compliance right now. They're calling it interim compliance because there is a further action that has to be taken, which is adoption, something by law by the end of this fiscal year.
Right. So, my feeling is we would have a right to file an exemption because we really aren't in compliance, we're in interim compliance. If the townspeople say, no, again, we're not in compliance, and I would like to be comfortable with that exemption being filed.
Okay, let's do this, just, we have...
That's good.
I just want to give a little clarification on unfunded mandate. Is, is that, hey, state, you need to help us out with being able to achieve this? Or is that, hey, North Reading spent X, Y, and Z money to be able to get here? I don't know, I'm just trying to clarify unfunded mandate.
And that's a good question, and that's one of the issues that's going to be debated at Middleborough is what does it mean? What, what is the funding that's required? How far does that go? Is it just, what does it take to draft this own bylaw? Is it the time that people took to work on it? What about if you hire a consultant to go out and help to prepare this own bylaw? Does it extend beyond that? Is it the cost of development? It resolves after you put this own bylaw into place? All that's been raised. That's, the answer to that is not clear at this point.
And certainly.
Okay, hold on. So, did you have just a follow-up to one of your questions?
Yeah, I have a follow-up. I, I just, I am concerned that, I feel like that this is kind of a, just a, like a buffer of, because I'm concerned that come June, when the townspeople again say, no, or not, but they've said no once, that they now take our grants or, you know, hey, those grants we gave you when you were in interim compliance, we're going to, we want them back. I don't know, they could do anything they want, it seems, so I wouldn't feel comfortable knowing that we filed this exemption. I just feel like it's a little buffer. It's something saying, you know, we're, we're not really in compliance and we're, we want to protect ourselves.
Listen to this. If you can, Ms. Strickman, for our next meeting, give us a, some, an idea of what that would look like and if you can estimate cost just for the petition, because I'm saying if there's a chance that they come and say, hey, you're premature with it, you know, just that I'd like to know that number and then we can, we're, we're going to take that one up on the executive session and then we'll update the public at the meeting as well.
Just, that's, next meeting is when?
The 17th. And hopefully, something comes out of the 7th.
I, I'd like to make a motion to file the exemption.
Second? Motion by, well, what was the exact motion?
To petition the superior court for an exemption.
Second?
Is that enough? Mr. Gilberto, for a town council?
Yeah. How would we make that motion? I'm just trying to get, yeah?
That's fine.
How, how, is that fine?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I, I think it's premature. It's premature, it's a waste of the taxpayers' money and we have no standing because we're not, we're in compliance, we don't need an exemption, but I think it's just going to, the court will get thrown out, so it's, why would we waste the taxpayers' money?
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
I haven't, Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah. I haven't seen, seen the petition. Usually, we review these kind of things before we vote on them, so I think it's, I've been, we haven't even seen what the petition really looks like, so how can we vote for it if we haven't seen it?
Can I, can I redact and, and change the wording of that?
You mean rescind your motion?
Rescind my motion.
Okay.
To...
Is that enough? We rescinded, they both did?
Uh, no, yeah, but I, but I'm going to change it.
She rescinded, you're going to, yeah, you're going to do it again.
And ask that town council...
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
If that's your intention.
But, I want to make a, I can change the motion.
Yeah, make another.
To town council drafting the petition so that we can, it will be ready for us to see at next meeting and ready to go if we want it to be.
Yeah, I can certainly, yeah, that would be a fine, that would be a perfectly fine motion.
Second? Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
What specifics are you going to have town council put into the motion, the motion to be filed with the court? What are we seeking? An exemption and, exemption and reimbursements for...
Yeah.
But for what?
If it is considered an unfunded mandate, that we'd be exempted from MBTA communities, correct? Is that, yes?
Current, someone? That would be the basic petition, right?
Yeah.
And they're just, so we can take a look at it.
I would just say it includes trying to recoup costs for what future costs may come from the zone again.
How far are you going, how far are you going to have council?
I say go as far as you can.
As far as we can.
Honestly, I've seen contractor chain builders that make the smallest scope of work turn into the biggest scope of work with equipment and materials. You throw in pencils, you throw in erasers, you throw in paper. I'm, I'm serious, throw it all in.
If, if, if I could...
Make everything a part of it.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we're not going to be the only town asking this. And I, how many towns do you have that are not in compliance or, or in interim compliance?
Well, we have a handful of towns that are considering this and, well, a handful, I think, I'm counting five, maybe.
So, we're not alone.
You're not alone, but just to be clear, if you're asking about town council to assemble costs, I don't have that information. I'm going to need that from the town. I can't make up the...
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
So, and then also...
There should be, I'm sorry, there should be other towns who are going to be probably asking you to do this, that, we're not going to be the only ones.
Well, Middleborough's already done it, so that it...
So, we can frame it around that.
And it's the petition that we can change, then we have the baseline, then we can talk about it, and we can just say, we're going to wait, we're going to do whatever. Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
No.
Okay. All right. I may never ride the orange line again after this because MBTA is just going to be this like nightmare in Miami. So, now, Republic House, you can make a statement.
We're going to shut off the, the mask over there.
Thank you. Okay. Only an hour behind schedule, but it's...
Mr. Gilberto?
We had, I have five chairs.
Yep.
Provided in the packet a copy of an opinion from town council with regard to the Select Ward policy 3.7, which prohibited select ward members from serving on certain board and committees. Board members have a copy of the opinion, but it basically indicates that...
Sorry. Can you, can you, can you stay for this, please? Since your letter is part of the...
It's not my letter, but I, I can stay, but...
It's Darren's.
It's Darren's, I don't think you can speak, can he, well, hold on, Mr., are you comfortable, Attorney Eichmann speaking to that letter or any question about it?
I have read the letter. I generally know what it's about. I wasn't directly involved in drafting it, but I'm, you know, happy to stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, so, just to summarize, it seems to indicate that, in his opinion, that the board is able to waive its policy prohibiting a board member from serving on a appointed board or committee, commission. He went on to state that this is based upon, I believe, some state case law, cited a couple of cases in there, Byfield versus New England, I believe, versus City Council, Somerville. I can ask, could you clarify, you know, does a specific vote need to be taken by the select board in order to waive the policy, make such an appointment? And it indicates in the opinion that that would be preferable, but not necessarily required and advisable for a future instance where something like that comes up. So, provided the opinion, I wrote votes may be taken because I don't know whether or if any votes need to be taken or not on this, but felt it was the best way to just transmit the opinion to the sent, Attorney Eichmann can answer questions, I'm sure he will, to the extent we need to talk directly with Attorney Klein, we can certainly find him that, for such conversation on that.
And we did put out an ad for that as well?
We published an ad, we submitted it to the, to the transcript, and then we had to make a correction to another ad, but they unfortunately opted not to run our ad with the vacancy, which was unfortunate based upon the timing, but...
It's running now, Thursday, though?
It will run Thursday, yes.
Okay.
So, it's supposed to run last Thursday.
Right now, to accept any of the nominees, we'd have to change the policy because it's either Mr., both Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Massey. However, I think because this ad's running and the members of the public might have a chance, I think it's a better, I think it's more prudent, and I'll go around and ask everyone's opinion, I think it's more prudent to see if we get any candidates from the public before we change the policy and just put, you know, because of a lack of any other interest to board members. And I'll go around and see what everybody else thinks. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you want to add something?
I just would add, I, I think the option could be changing the policy, it could also be a waiver of the policy as well, to be clear.
Either way, yeah, but the board can decide if we get no one else, let's waive it and then these are the two candidates, do we want them in?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How did this come up? Why is this on our agenda?
Why is what on the agenda? This one right here?
Yeah, with the one we're on.
Because, because everyone's asking to get on this rental board and this is a committee appointment. We talked about it last, we talked about it last week, that we were going to...
So, we're going to get an opinion from Mr. Klein? Yeah. What happened was you asked to get an opinion from Kate Dealaw...
Which we now have.
When I asked to join a committee because it had a vacancy.
And because I think it's a good committee for the cause.
Mr. O'Leary mentioned to go to town council, which hasn't happened on any other.
No, I did not, actually.
You absolutely did.
I didn't.
No.
Can I just say that this is a different situation because you wanted to be a voting member, correct? Which is not the standard, we usually have a leading zone. It makes it a little different.
So, how many years has Mr. O'Leary been a part of the mobile home rent control against this policy? And again, how many years?
Liaison.
He's not in it, he's a liaison.
Liaison, not a voting member.
Not a voting member.
Okay. Change it up.
What's that?
I'll change it up. How many years has Mr. Wong been a part of the taxation aid committee as a voting member? And why is this coming up now?
We're trying to, if anything, if we change policy, we're trying to correct.
That's not, I just want to point out...
Yep.
Okay. Now, all these committees is, can we identify what's considered permanent and what's considered temporary?
That list you have is liaison assignments.
Undisturbed, but it also has voting member.
Yeah, there's two by statute. The Economic Development Committee and the Community, and the CIPC Capital.
Fire Station Building Committee.
Yeah, which we, but we, we establish that in a vote with other people.
Okay.
You're actually part of two.
I understand. I'm just curious.
Okay.
I'm curious in the rules, curious on your policies.
They're not my policy.
So, this mobile home rent control, is, is other board members here going to be now taking off those until we waive this?
There isn't a member of this board as a member of that.
It's just a liaison.
Just a liaison. It's just a liaison assignment. It's a, a liaison to the conservation...
Just so everybody knows, a liaison doesn't...
He's just liaison, he's not a voter, Steve's not on it.
On the taxation, we're, we're going to determine that after we vote.
Okay.
That's my question.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's move on. Do you, really? Not, not too close, sir.
Move on to what?
Thank you.
We're moving on to the next thing.
We're not going to vote tonight, we'll pass this.
Okay. Well, we're not gonna vote, and did you wanna add something to it, Mr. O'Leary?
Well, are we gonna address the policy or not?
No, we're not addressing the policy until we see members, I don't think it's a good look that if we address the policy, we vote to change it, vote you two in, and then there's three people that come back from members of the public that wanna be part of it. So, I.
Can we talk it through? I mean, I'll gladly take myself out if I remember the public wasn't. I just went in because there was an open. I'm trying to volunteer more, you know?
But that's what I mean. So you're just rearing what I said, that we're advertising it on Thursday. If we get no one, and then we absolutely have to, and not, you know, then at that point, it's like, you know what? Maybe, maybe we're gonna change the policy anyways, but maybe I'll feel better about two select board members being on it, because at least there's people on it.
I understand.
By the way, there's only one vacancy.
And there's only one vacancy?
One vacancy, but you still have a liaison, correct?
Can we expand the committee?
I'll be standing first of all. Okay. Mr. Chick, can I ask a few other questions on select board policies in general? I brought it up a few different times in email, but I've brought up a lot of select board policies that we may or may not practice. Somehow, everything else but the hard questions are getting on here. Mr. Gilberto, is there any way I can get maybe an answer to my emails that I've sent you, or is there any way that we can discuss the policies that I believe we're not practicing?
I mean, I'll address that. I think it's a matter of the amount of time that everyone has. I mean, it is. Mr. Massey, I guarantee, I will almost guarantee you that you've sent more emails than this entire board combined in the last six months.
I would double down on that. Why bring up? So, I'm not trying to be an issue, I promise. But what I'm getting at is, I'm bringing up, as the agenda item, is select board policies. Over the last few meetings, we have voted on select board policies. One has to do with him, and the other has to do with a committee. The other items that I've brought up, can we?
Can we correct our records? I do have a good answer for that.
Unless we, unless we wish to wanna go, there's no such thing.
No, no, but I do have a good answer for that. As they, as they come up, because we have a million things, there are certain select board policies that just are not pertinent at the moment, and I'm not gonna put that on for a two-hour discussion versus even MBTA, as much as I don't wanna talk about. But as they come up, if you notice, we've talked about them and voted on them. It's just that some of the things that I even think are wrong, they haven't even come up, and it's just, it's a time thing of that. The best thing I can tell you.
That's fine.
It's just a time.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'm not privy to the correspondence you've had with the title administrator, but if you have questions about specific policies, the board policies, you should bring it to the chair.
He's on the reason.
Okay, okay, bring it to the chair.
He's on the reason.
And say, you know, these are the policies that need to be reconfirmed or changed along with the times, because some of these policies are 30 years old.
Mr. Chair.
You know, I agree, you know, then, but again, it's a housekeeping, generally it's a housekeeping matter. It's not a contentious matter, it's a housekeeping matter. Our practices are not necessarily in line with our policies, and if that's the case, then let's make sure that our practices and policies agree. But again, you spend some time doing, you know, looking into them, and there's some specific nuances.
He has, I give him that.
Then, then at some point, we should just have a.
It's a matter.
I know it's a matter of time. It is a matter of time.
I'm sorry, if I find something, if I find an open four hours. We're gonna have a policy book, yeah. Might as well follow.
Again, it's a matter of time, it's a matter of priorities, and I don't disagree with you. And again, the policy, the policy book and the select board policy is just a set of guidelines established by this board over time to follow and give us some guidance to do it. It's not a law, and the board can waive its policy or can just ignore the policy at will anyway.
Or delete it.
Or delete it, no?
And say, we don't follow this policy.
But as far as voting people on boards, committees, and commissions, again, some of these things come up and go down, and some of these committees that we have are finite, they're not forever and a day. And, you know, like the Secondary School Building Committee, I'm a voting member of that. Someday, it'll be closed out and it'll be over with.
Okay, and we are out of time for the agenda number five.
So.
But thank you, thank you. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the next agenda item, six, was a hearing that was advertised a couple of times. However, the request for proposals that's associated with lease appropriate to DPW is still open. We've extended the deadline for submissions. So, DPW Director and I both felt that we should not have this public hearing until we have the results of the procurement in hand to at least be having a hearing on a specific proposal relative to the telecommunications tower at the DPW yard. So, that's the public, we're gonna re-advertise that when we have a date identified. It could be as soon as the second meeting in March, but we're not positive as of yet.
Thank you.
The next agenda item, number seven, the 104 Lowell Road, Martin's Landing Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement. This is a follow-up action that's associated with the Board of Appeals approval to add an additional floor to a number of the buildings at the development, as well as the required affordable units. There's an associated regulatory agreement that goes with those units to make them preserved as affordable and to be eligible to be included on our subsidized housing inventory. This, I believe, is a final amendment for that.
This covers the next two.
So there may be two more after this.
I think there may be another amendment with the last two.
For the final building and the two units that would be in it. So, we're recommending that this be approved to sort of help us get the, get the proposal, get the units eligible for the subsidized housing inventory as soon as possible. Attorney, thank you.
Thank you.
I, to be clear, this is not authorizing any additional units to be constructed, it's merely ensuring units that were authorized and designated to be subsidized housing eligible to help ensure that they become. So we have prepared a motion, so.
Go to motion, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Second Amendment to Martin's Landing Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement and to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other comment?
I'm hoping that I'll try. MBTA, sorry.
Identify yourself, first.
Jim Gahan, Mount Wayne Drive. I'm afraid. I did read the legis, I did read the, the audit, the report. And it basically says, if the town determines that there's an unfunded mandate, you can ask for an exemption from compliance from the Supreme Court, which is actually the one who made it a mandate, because they, in the lawsuit, they actually determined that it was a mandate from the state. The cost cannot be any more than incidental local administration expenses. That's all we're gonna recover. Not a brick, not a stone, nothing. It has just to do with administrative expenses. At last year's town meeting, the question was asked, what has the town spent on this? When the lawyer said, well, we may spend up to $10,000, the opponents had a conniption about it being that high. So, my estimation is that it's somewhere less than $10,000 that we're talking about. That would be from reading it and understanding it. Last thing, there is a proposal before the CPC to exclude Martin's Landing from MBTA Communities Act. And I believe it's going to be a discussion at the next CPC meeting. Actually, I thought it was gonna be last week, but I guess it's, no, sometime next week. To exclude Martin's Landing, but not Edgewood, and to find additional space within the town to cover the other acreage that is required. I don't know if all of you are aware of that, I know Mr. Massey was, because he was sitting behind me when it came up. So, we'll be at the CPC meeting next week, I think, and I hope that what will happen is there will be a proposal put before the CPC to exclude Martin's Landing, and the four-point, excuse me, 3.8% of the town that voted against it, the town didn't vote, less than 4% came to that town meeting and voted against it, of which 137 of them were from Martin's Landing. So we're asking, Mr. Pierce is actually asking if we exclude Martin's Landing from the proposal, find an additional space to add with Edgewood, and then we submit that to the state. Hopefully, that was what will happen sometime before we get to June. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Yeh for Glazier and Hodge. A lot of our conversations is around funding of the MBTA and the costs of whether we move to another location or not. We've all heard of the term trickle-down theory. Things trickle down from the top all the way down to the bottom. The bottom is us, we pay for everything in the end. The concerns that I have is that Hunt Secretary Turner is scrapping programs such as the MBTA, not necessarily in name, but in concept, that no funding will be given to a state that has a policy that's gonna destroy suburban neighborhoods nationwide. That'll basically happen to Massachusetts, because we have a policy that's going to go against that mandate by the housing and urban development. Okay, that was, began, I think, February 25th, they began taking action on that. So we're gonna lose funding, federal funding. So this is where the trickle-down comes into play, all right? If we, we're not gonna be getting federal funding, and I don't know, not to candidly, I don't know how much money we get to support the state of Massachusetts for programs like this from the past administration. I don't know what the dollar amounts are, I admit that. But whatever they are, they're no longer gonna be available to the state of Massachusetts or any state that forces programs such as the MBTA Act. When that happens, then the question is, where is the state gonna get the money from? If they can't get it from the federal government, they have to get it from us. So that's gonna create a tremendous increase of cost to us. A reason for not pursuing the MBTA Act or anything like that, all right? If you wanna look at it from a financial perspective, is that we're not gonna have the money to accomplish what is needed to be accomplished, okay? Or what they say is needed to be accomplished. So I think we need to take that into consideration, because funding is always the best argument to say, if we don't comply, we're gonna lose funding, that the funding is not gonna be there. So we have to really, your board has to really take this into consideration and identify, really, is it worth it to go down this path? My guess is that it is not, all right? I thank you all for all the time and effort you put on these things, especially the CPC. They look at it, you know, from a different perspective, and it's important that as we move forward, we have to realize, everything boils down to the money. We follow the money, and if there's no money at the end of that, no reason going for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's, Paul, there. What would you advise you? I complained, I don't know if we took a vote after that first, that long session, and, I couldn't hear a thing, so I'm gonna vote your vote. Was that a vote we're taking, or is that just on the board?
Just the board.
Just the board.
Okay. Is there anything we can do as far as upgrading the hearing in here? Because from over there, I cannot, I cannot hear anything. If you can't hear the attorney, he's facing this way. So people are facing this way, you just can't hear it against the wall. I mean, these things work, but everyone doesn't really speak into it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking at somebody who would, who would be compassionate and listen to what I would say. You're more compassionate than he is.
I mean, I don't know if we can change the acoustics in the room.
You do.
We just all have to talk, not.
Yes, that's the solid.
But I think, I think we should, we should try to speak into the microphone, certainly we can hear.
Okay, the microphone, though, is not for this room, that's the problem.
Well, this one is.
It does help pretty much.
Yeah, but there should be a person speaking. Can't she have a, you know, a microphone for the attorney? He's still there?
He had a microphone.
Yeah, I can hear him, for most people, you can't hear.
He's a little.
Sit back or something.
You're right. Hold on.
This one here works great.
I'm clear. Anyone else? Anyone online?
There are, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of written comments, and one hand raised. We'll go to Caitlin Galvin, I'll ask her to unmute, see if that works.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Galvin, 33 Hayes Hill Drive. Just quickly on MBTA, I just want to encourage the blackboard in town council provides you with a risk reward assessment alongside the complaint that you've asked to withdraw. The unsunted mandate provision has been law on the books since the 80s. I'd ask town council how many towns have succeeded since ever in any exemptions. My initial count is none. In terms of reward, I mean, Mr. Ginn may have mentioned it, but ask what your odds of reimbursement are. As far as I can tell, the agency has already signaled that towns can't get reimbursement. It just is, you decide when to get that complaint, is when will the equal fees are worth it? Make sure you're getting a good assessment of the risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There were two typewritten comments relative to MBTA, one from someone that identified as Al M. The more people that speak up, the more the state will listen. And then, could you explain how are we in compliance if the town voted it down? I know that we provided documents in time, but the town voted it down. And again, I think the answer is the town's, the state has designated us into this interim compliance category based on extended deadlines.
And the next one?
I think that was all. Mr. Chairman, through you, we do have a presentation to go through, the Fiscal Year 2026 Revenue and Expense Plan ahead of starting the budget hearings for departments, boards, and committees. So, Mrs. Galvin, will read the presentation on that flash guide, actually?
Yeah, so if you open up the folder. Sort it, not to sort it, just by, well, that's it right there. See, FY 2026 Revenue and Expense, that's it.
Gloria, can you move the microphone over to her? Mr. Chairman, through you, I don't know if you wanna invite the Finance Committee, they can approach, certainly. We're not in the hearings yet, but we have a table set up for the Finance Committee members, if they wanna come to the front, particularly Mrs. Norbert. And then I'm gonna try to share it for you.
Good evening.
You can just go to the slideshow. Sam Callahan is online, and Dan Mills is on. All right, I'm gonna try to see what I can do there. So for those that's, page 67 in our packet is what. Is there any other numbers, Mrs. Horvick, besides Mr. Keller?
The only two that I saw when you were the screen out were Dan and Don, and I got a text message from Don that he was sick. That'll teach him from going on a cruise.
So I believe we have five of the nine seats on the Finance Committee here, so four.
Yes.
Excellent. I'll turn it over to the Finance Director for the numbers, and then I'll speak to the narrative.
Yeah. So this is an update on the Revenue and Expense Plan. We had provided a presentation to the School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee back in January. So this is an update. So for the real estate, basically, the levy is what it is. No real change from when we first presented. No real change from when we first presented. You can see the only, basically, you take the prior year levy increased by two and a half percent, and then you add new growth. This year, we're using a figure of $880,000 for the new growth estimate for fiscal 2025. You can see it was as high as 1.5 million, but a large part of that was because of the Pulte development. They're on their last building, so the estimate is lower. The next section is our state aid. The governor did release an initial charity sheet, which is the state aid. You can see that the Chapter Seventy has increased, which is the aid for schools. And then the unrestricted government aid also increased. Veterans benefits decreased, but this is based on benefits that were given out to veterans. The EBI forces somewhat of a delay in the reimbursements and...
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Oops, sorry.
Could I just ask you to go back one more slide? Just to point out, we know that there's some movement that's happening with excluded debt. So the debt exclusion amount in 2025 went, you know, went down from 815,000 to just over $125,000 per year, so pretty significant reduction. We know that as the Chestnut Street Bridge project begins to move forward, that that will be one that will have a debt exclusion component to it, as well as a ladder truck that will fill back some, but certainly not all of that debt service. So there is, if you look and you see that total tax percent, it's only a shade above two, two and a half percent, right? That proposition two and a half number we talked about, that's being largely driven by the fact that the excluded debt service is coming off the books. That money's not freed up to be used for any other purpose, including the operating budget, unless voted by the town at a town meeting and a ballot vote. Thank you.
Can I, can I, Mr. Chairman, through you? Can you explain those veterans benefits a little bit? I don't understand what that was about.
The veterans benefits is per the state. We give out benefits and then we get reimbursed by the state.
So we haven't been reimbursed yet? Is that what you're saying?
It's, it's like delayed, so it's based on the prior year, what we gave out. So it was a lower amount as there were fewer claims. And then, but on the reverse side, the exemptions for the blind elderly and the surviving spouse, we increased through town meeting, the allotments for each one of those, what we give in abatements. So by the same respect, the state reimburses a portion of those. So that's why that number increased.
So are you saying that veterans act didn't come forward for benefits?
Right, we, initially after COVID, we lost some.
Okay, thank you.
I do think that that's an area, through you, Mr. Chairman, that's an area where we may see some fluctuations in growth. Mr. Tedeschi being in the position and the outreach he's conducting. So we could see that that number begins to rise. We would first see it in the form of the request for funding for veterans benefits to be funded at town meeting, and then it would become a reimbursement. It's twenty-five percent, is that right? Did we get that?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent, excuse me. So, and that would lag a year later. So we have to sort of front the increase and then get the money back in a percentage a year later.
So that, that was basically because of, mostly because of COVID? Okay, thank you.
So then, you can't really see this line down here, but the school building assistance reimbursement, which we previously had for the Hood School, has ended, so, so has the debt. So we no longer have reimbursement. So then, the next series of our revenue is our own local receipts. So motor vehicle, we've level-funded most of them based on historical trend. In addition, the two areas that we did increase are the licenses and permits and the building permits. The building department increased their building permits in November, and the Board of Health increased their permit fees in January. The Board of Health, they both did studies of surrounding communities, determined that their fees were lower than some of our counterparts. So, believe it or not, Board of Health almost doubled their fees. So we expect an additional about $40,000. Their fees are in the licenses and permits line. And then the building permits, they expected like a fifteen percent increase. It's hard to tell sometimes with building because you could have had large permits one year that you might not necessarily have the following year, especially with Pulte. So we have to try to sort those things out and see our best, but that was about another $60,000. So overall, on the estimated receipts, we're looking at $100,000 increase on just the permits. Then on investment income, you can see that the twenty-five actual was $796,000. We're projecting fairly close to that, but as we move forward through this budget season, we will have to watch the interest rates. You know, if they tend to come down, we might have to lower that number a little bit, but this is our best estimate of where we will land next year, taking into account trends and what we do think is going to happen. So as you can see, the estimated receipts have only increased about 1.7%. I have control, okay. The last portion is what we transfer from other funds. Every year, we make a transfer from the Debt Capital Stabilization Fund, which is to cover debt service. The 2025 number is larger than the 2026 because the debt was larger. We're, this year, we're not quite budgeting the entire amount of debt service as coming from the stabilization fund because this is a number that's highly reliant on free cash. We put free cash into the fund each year at town meeting, and then we draw it down. But as the budgets get tighter and as revenue, both the expenditure turnbacks and the revenue projections get closer to the actuals, we're not as confident about our free cash. So we don't want to become overly reliant on the transfer from the debt stabilization because then when it's not available, we will have to fund that completely within our operating budget, which would have a substantial impact on both the municipal and school budgets. The other number you can see that we have increased is the transfer from the PFA Stabilization, which is our health insurance fund. It is, the PFA is from our, we partially self-insure. So we have built up a stabilization fund. And because we anticipate a very large increase in the health insurance, we are going to withdraw funds to offset that. It's a larger increase than projected in the prior year. So that's why it's a larger withdrawal. That number is still, we're doing further research. We're still waiting for other health insurance companies to give us estimates on what our, what they would fund or expect from us. But right now, this is just a beginning forecast of what we think we'd have to withdraw to offset the renewal rates that Blue Cross has given us.
Mr. Galvin, if you could say that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, quick question. I, I think this was the second time I've heard this, but we take money out of the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to fund debt service?
Yes, because it's capital improvements. It's the debt on that capital.
Can you give some examples of projects that we've taken from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund?
If we've purchased a ladder truck that you're borrowing over 20 years, you're repairing a bridge over 20 years, road work, it's anything we borrow for because that's the capital improvement, so you take from that fund.
The ladder truck is separate, right? Debt exclusion?
This year, but in the past.
Okay.
So if we...
So roads would be operational? Question mark?
No, we borrow for those. So therefore, that was the, that was the reason the fund was established, was to stabilize debt.
Maybe I wasn't, obviously, wasn't in my position now when it was established, but the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund is there to fund debt?
As well as capital projects. Like, we could fund projects directly from that fund by making a transfer out of that fund. It could be funded directly from the fund, or the debt can be funded with that fund. Because it, the whole reason was, if you have spikes of debt, you want to be able to stabilize so you're not impact, overly impacting the operating budget in any given year if, if all projects should, you know, culminate in the same year.
Is there any reason we take from Capital Improvement Stabilization rather than other funds? Is, is there other funds that you could take from?
That's why the Capital Stabilization Fund started. If you have the Selectment, if you have the Selectment handbook, the capital plan is in there now. We did redo it with a few tiny changes about a year ago, but it has not been accepted by the Selectment yet. But the original one, which deals with how much debt can you carry? How do you keep what you pay level so you don't spike when you go out by a large degree to them? And that's the basic purpose of it. So it's for, as Larianne said, for paying for subcapital items, but also for paying the cost of borrowing.
Are we only allowed to utilize the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund for capital projects?
Yes.
Have we always done that in the past?
Fifteen years.
Since it's been established.
Okay. Now, maybe I thought I saw some different...
Before that, we did, they were using regular stabilization, but the regular stabilization is what the bond rating agencies look at. So you don't really want to touch your, your general stabilization. So years ago, we established this fund to take the burden off the stabilization fund. And it was really, the whole point of it was to stabilize debt.
I thought it was more and more like a savings account to save for future projects that were coming up, but seems like we're pretty reliant on that fund.
That's a different stabilization fund than I think you're talking about. That's, that's...
Are all stabilization funds that we have right here?
No.
If not, why not?
That's not, that's not mine. Larianne, is the town regular, you know, any new fund on there?
It's not on here because we are not transferring from it. We don't touch it.
Right.
I think it would be nice to understand all the funds that we have, just to...
You're right, but part of...
I mean, you could put zero.
Part of what the bonding agencies look at is what percentage of your budget is baked basically in a savings account. And we've worked very hard over the last ten or fifteen years to build it up very slowly. We're not quite where we shouldn't be, but we're very close. And it is not money that's meant to be spent.
I'm just...
It's a life insurance policy.
Two certainly different things. I, I agree. I, I'm going to agree with you. I just think it would be nice to understand.
I agree.
From, from a new guy coming in, I don't know all our funds. I don't know how much we got remaining in our funds. This is an information that we show, and I think it would be not only helpful for the board, but for the people. Thank you.
So on the opposite side are our expenses. And this first list here are the shared fixed costs, which are not allocated to either the municipal or the school side. One number that we did increase is the additional Northeast Regional School capital. This is for the project, the school building project in Wakefield. They just recently had an update on their borrowing costs. So they were advised to increase, I believe it was from four to four and a half percent, their estimates on their debt. The other numbers there, the debt service, these are preliminary forecasts based on what our departments, the projects that were already approved and the expected cash flow before June thirtieth, because we would have to borrow for those projects, anything that they're working on to cover any funds spent by June thirtieth. We usually issue debt in May, so in the next month, we will be doing a final analysis of exactly what we're going to borrow and hopefully getting better estimates of the interest rates on those projects. The other thing we did, the reserve for abatements and exemptions. You can see we're increasing it from 429 to 450. Primarily, this is, we've had increased interest in the Senior Rebate Program. And we've also increased amounts on all of, practically all of our abatements. Then the only other number down at the bottom here is the estimate for the contingency for health insurance, for health claims that are funded from the PFA. This is a portion of our health insurance costs. So we adjusted the number from last year mostly because we had some amounts in there that were not allocated to either the municipal or the school. But as we refined our number, we, we, I'll show you on the next slide, we refined that difference and allocated them to the municipal and school. So...
Ms. Galvin, do you mind going back? Can, do you mind explaining, Mr. Chair, through you? Do you mind explaining the increase from, and maybe clarifying what it means, debt service short-term doubling year over year?
Oh, the, the short, short-term debt is when we have our temporary borrowing. So this year, we did go permanent, or we don't intend to go permanent. So it goes into the short-term interest category because it's not allocated to any of the permanent debt that would be found on the other lines. It's ju, it would be the interest for, basically, if we do a ban for one year, it's just the one year's worth of interest, you're not paying any principal yet. So that's why that number has increased because we intend to have a ban as opposed to go permanent.
What is that? I'm sorry, we intend to have a ban?
Just short-term, short-term borrowing rather than, than full-permanent borrowing. It gives us the chance to see how much we are going to spend on projects and gives us a better timeline to, to make sure that, you know, we're not over borrowing for what we're going to spend in a given year. Sometimes you can't tell when the project's going to start and how much a department will need by the end of the year. So you only go temporary until you can determine that.
I'm sorry, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the county retirement and both the school and the municipal, these are the allocated fixed costs, so they are split out between the municipal and the school department. So each department's share basically comes off of their available funds before there's anything available for their operating budget. The county retirement numbers are numbers that we, county retirement has forecasted for us. The other numbers, we tend to increase by a certain percentage each year until we have more sound numbers. Now, you'll see on the health insurance, our carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield, has estimated a 16.8% increase. Last year, the increase between the PFA and Blue Cross Blue Shield was eight and a half percent. So this is a sizable increase. So that's why we decided to transfer in some from the PFA to try to bring that increase down. Right now, it's roughly about 10 and a half percent because we're finding that the averages across the state are much higher than the eight and a half percent increase. Again, it's only a preliminary number, just to start the discussion, but Blue Cross, it's a 16.8% increase.
Municipal side pays the school's workers' comp? Is that accurate?
No, no, school workers' comp and municipal workers' comp, there's two lines.
Understood, but it comes out of the municipal budget?
No, it would come out of the... No, it would come out of the school.
Okay.
On the next slide, you'll see how they're split.
Okay.
This is just showing them overall, so you can see the total number increased by thirteen point ten percent. So it shows the total increase in these allocated costs, but then I will show how they're split, actually split out and how they affect what's available to each side. Any other questions on this slide?
Just on this entirely healthier.
So what happens is we take the total general fund revenue and then we subtract what we call the town fixed costs, but that's those unallocated fixed costs. So that's the ten million five ninety-eight, it leaves seventy-three million dollars, seventy-three eight. From that, we then take that seventy-three eight and allocate between the municipal and the school. And it's roughly sixty-seven percent for the school department and thirty-three for the town. So then you can see how we list out all the municipal side of those allocated costs. So the municipal portion is six point four million. So as you can see, the revenue increased four point one nine, but the fixed costs increased ten point five six, of which seventeen percent is the health insurance. And you're going to ask, why is it higher than sixteen point eight? The reason is because whereas we had a portion of costs in the contingency line, which is above the line, we then refined and did a forecast and realized that, okay, this much goes of that amount. Really went to the town side or municipal side, and the other portion went to the school. So the municipal side has offsets that go right to, to fund the municipal side. First is the trash fee, which offsets our sanitation budget. We have a transfer from cemetery, which offsets the public works budget. The ambulance reserve offsets fire, the water indirect costs, the water enterprise pays the general fund for a number of different services, anything from, you know, a portion of the IT director's salary to a portion of my salary, to health insurance, a number of different lines. So that's that five hundred and fifty thousand. Likewise, the recreation department, they're also an enterprise, they fund a small share. And then, so the total revenue offset is two point six million. And that leaves municipal revenue of twenty million dollars that can go towards the operating budget. This year, the department, the tally department requests, including four additional firefighters over the four we added for two thousand twenty-five, is twenty million, twenty-one million four fifteen, which leaves the municipal side with a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Any questions on the municipal side?
Couple of questions. The sixty-seven thirty-three percent split for schools and municipal, again, this is my first time going through this. I'm sorry for both questions. I know we have a busy agenda. Does that ever get changed per enrollment, or is that a, is that a number that we carry as a general?
For the most part, that's, we carry it and it's been carried up at that amount for a long time. Here and there, if one side or the other has an extensive need and the other side feels that they have a little bit more wiggle room, we might adjust it at the most two percent, but.
Do you know when the last time that happened?
It happened twice in my six years on the, at least twice in my six years, but there were ones in each direction. It has been adjusted. It's usually like less than a percent that it's been adjusted because it's such a significant impact.
I'm sure.
But it, it has changed depending upon the need. And then the other thing I will say is we also have times at the very end of the budget process, if one side had a bigger deficit than the other, allocated any additional revenue towards that and not changed a percentage too. So there's been some variance.
True.
Trying to find out the intricacies of school and municipal with a, with a line cross. I appreciate it. Yeah, trash fee.
Yes.
Does that include the school's trash removal and disposal?
So this trash fee of one point three million offsets only a portion of the total sanitation budget. So it does not offset the municipal and school trash of those buildings. It only offsets the residential portion. So if the sanitation budget is a million four, then this offsets a million three. So that hundred thousand is supposed to represent like municipal building trash and school building trash.
I can add a little bit of color to that, which is that we've, there was a period of time when the fee was first established and a couple of times thereafter where the fee was set to match the total sanitation budget. We've advised to make sure that the fee isn't paying for those municipal and school trash disposals. So we've sort of, what happens now is we delay the adjustment to make sure we're leaving that buffer in there so that the residential taxpayer, residential rate payer isn't paying for the disposal of trash at a school or at the town hall in the fee. So we have to be careful with that to make sure, that, that number really should never match the full amount of the sanitation budget.
Maybe I should have asked it under expenses instead, but just to clarify, so I apologize.
Sure.
Chose them on sight. We do, municipal budget does pay for the school collection and disposal, correct?
It does, and, and biggest problem is all the trash is picked up together. So it's kind of hard to say what each, what it is, but yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
So here's just a recap of the municipal's position. For two thousand twenty-five, our total budget, and this is after adjustments at October town meeting, because we did add back to a few budgets, was twenty million two fifteen. And then we, of that, thirty-four thousand was one-time cost. I believe it was DPW Small Capital funded from free cash for thirty-four thousand. So left our, the municipal budget at twenty million one eighty-one. This year, the request is twenty-one million four fifteen, and the revenue available is the twenty million five sixty-four. So that leaves the eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar deficit.
So Ms. Chairman threw you just a little bit of context for these budget hearings that will begin this evening. The department's boards, commissions, and committees, they submitted generally budgets that reflect their projected needs while also considering the town's financial position, which is challenging. The hearings tonight on March seventeenth and on thirty-first, they reflect those requests, but they do not consider the amount of funding that's actually available. So as has been the case in the past few years, there's no recommendation that's being offered from myself or the finance director at this stage. We do have an unbalanced budget. There may be some slight adjustments to the revenue and expense plan that could free up some funding for municipal school operations, but we do not expect by any stretch that the deficits themselves will be solved. A dummy distress community needs to be prepared for the likelihood that proposed and existing positions, programs, and services will need to be reduced and or eliminated in order to balance the budget. I included here some slides from our fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget discussions that represent some, but not all of the budget reductions that may be required. And I'm not going to go through them, but these are slides that were up and circulated in June around the time of town meeting with a series of potential reductions, none of which were identified as being implemented at this point in time, but are likely going to be part of the conversation as we budget, as we seek to balance the budget throughout the course of this spring, next few weeks. It's not the only things that will be considered. I think you're going to need to look closely at the entirety of the budget. But these are the types of things that we've talked about that we're going to need to look at as we try to balance the budget. It affects all departments in some way, shape, or form. The finance director and I will be asking department heads at the upcoming department head meeting to provide us their recommendations as to how things might be balanced. We didn't want to wait till we were done going through budget hearings to do that. So I do feel it's a little bit of taking the wind out of folks' sails as they, as they come here to make their presentations. But we do think that the starting point ought to be the departments themselves as we work to try to balance the budget. Many of the departments have already made reductions from their fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five requests. Even what's before you, but unfortunately, I need to ask them to work more closely. So I, I just, I feel it's important to highlight that. I think you can hear a lot of great information about the work being done in the various departments, but we're in a challenging spot as you can see from that deficit. We've had a deficit in prior years. It's the size of the amount, of the amount of that deficit at this point, and the fact that many departments have already made reductions that makes it more concerning. I do just want to speak briefly to the school department budget, and there will be, we're going to talk about next steps, so there will be more opportunity to talk directly with the school committee about the budget. But you see that the total school revenue available after you out, take the allocated costs out is thirty, thirty-nine million nine hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars. And then the local service department request amount was forty-one million three hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred one dollars, which means a project, a projected deficit of approximately one point four million dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And I, I hesitate to go too far into that conversation out of deficit, school committee, the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations. As I mentioned, the financial planning team will continue to refine our strategy for fiscal year twenty-six and beyond. And the capital improvement planning committee continues its work. Finance from planning team talked on Friday morning, and we would like to propose that a joint select board, school committee, finance committee meeting, similar to the meeting we held in January, be held again on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth in the evening at the distance learning lab. We do expect the select board to sign the town meeting warrant, including the budget recommendations on Monday, May fifth. Town meeting, of course, has voted at the select board meeting last week, is Monday, June ninth. And we are working to identify a second date, given the potential for the meeting to stretch to a second, second day. That concludes the presentation in terms of the overall revenue and expense plan. Again, we'll be looking to have a more expansive discussion about things at that March twenty-sixth meeting. It's all right if they could move into the departmental budget hearings at this point. I know there's a number of folks who have waited this evening, so we definitely appreciate that. I think nearly all the presentations are on the thumb drag, it's up there. Daniel, do you have? I believe we had a request, and we probably were able to accommodate that request to start with the Department of Elder Services. As long as aging is the first, first budget here. Director of Public Services and the Senior Senate Director, the Director of Elder Services, Kim Angelius also here. Karen, can we reverse what's going on with the lights? Maybe dim the front and bring up the back slowly.
And we may have to cut your budget.
And just on the other side, and you can bring that up just a little bit. Great, thank you. Is that all right for folks? Everyone saw they'll see. I know it's not coming through in the discussion. We do have a new projector, which is quite a bit brighter. So that's helping things in terms of how dark we need to make the front of the room. But if it's too dark, certainly it's not.
Try again.
I can do whole screen. Would that be nice?
No, just try again. All right, say okay, close out from that window, and then try one more time.
This one.
This one? Love modern technology.
We're sharing a mouse and things.
Okay, I'm advancing by what?
I think you can do.
I should be on that.
This guy? Yeah, these little arrows.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm reporting on the Department of Elder Services fiscal year twenty-six budget proposal. So I'm going to start off with our mission, which is living well and aging well. Our dedicated staff is committed to providing older adults and their caregivers in our community with essential tools, resources, and support needed to age with dignity and well-being. We strive to empower individuals to live their best lives and thrive in our community. How do we do this? Through a holistic approach by giving aging adults opportunities to participate in programs to stay physically and mentally fit and knowledgeable about their health and resources that are available to them. We have listed some of the resources in the little yellow circles. We implement fitness and exercise programs, health and education programs, which include blood pressure screenings, flu clinics, caregiver and veterans' support groups, which are very well attended, and social engagement and volunteer opportunities, which foster a sense of purpose and support our day-to-day operations. We also have been seeing an increase in demand for assistance for transportation, resources, and support in this area. We provide safety and accessibility resources, and we also hold regular office hours for fuel assistance, housing assistance and insecurity, and Medicare and insurance counseling. In addition to programming, it's really important to note that the department functions as a significant health and human service resource, resource for residents in the town. And we also have a role in public safety and wellness checks, which staff and van drivers perform regularly. So it's important to just take a look at the senior center staff and our, our overview on the staffing model and understand how the positions are funded. The senior center staff relies heavily, well, the senior center department relies heavily on state and federal grants in addition to town funding. The senior center town funding is half of one percent of the town budget. State formula grants are relied on to support positions for Sue Tilton, our outreach coordinator, and Jackie Quinn, our program and transportation coordinator. The state formula grants are awarded yearly. They are based on the federal census, the last federal census, which was completed in twenty-two, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, and just funds fifteen dollars per resident for the age of sixty years of age and older per year. We also rely on Mass dot Mobility Management Grant Funds, which is a federal fund, and that supports portions of Jackie's salary and our van driver hours provided, when van drivers are providing transportation over thirty-five hours per week. We rely on Massachusetts Council on Aging Grant Funds as well as North Reading Cultural Council Grant Funds, and they support much of our programs and space costs. So just looking at the overall staff, we have myself as director. Sherry Greer is our assistant, administrative assistant. Mike Lawler and Paul Sanger share, share a thirty-five hour position combined. Those are all town-funded. We also have Susan Tilton, our outreach coordinator, so she's funded twenty hours by the town and through the state formula grant, which is fifteen hours. And Sue has worked with the department for over nine years. She provides intensive case. to better secure our program and transportation coordinator position, which is fully grant-funded through fifteen-hour state formula grant and then twenty hours through the MassDOT Mobility Grant. And we also have Mike Connors and Cindy Amor as backup van drivers, and when they are pulled in to provide in excess of over thirty-five hours for our regular drivers, they're funded through the MassDOT Mobility Manageable Grant Fund, which is a federal fund. So all of these roles are crucial to our department and day-to-day operations. So the next slide demonstrates some funding and growth, and just looking at our current population in town, our current population is sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety residents. That was confirmed, I think, a week or two ago with the town clerk's office. Our trend in growth for the residents that are age sixty and above, you can see it's trending upward and it's steadily increasing, where we just have some data from 2021. We have four thousand, fifty-five residents that were sixty years old and above, and now we have four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen residents that are age sixty years of age and above. So we're trending to reach at least thirty-five percent of the overall population by the year 2030, which is just five years from now. So to support all of our growth and participation, the senior center has expanded its offerings and now holding programs across town. We are at four locations, the senior center, Aldersgate Church, Town Hall, and the Sonic Lodge. Massachusetts Council on Aging Grant Funding has allowed additional outreach for the past two years. It supports one day a week of space and activities at the Aldersgate Church, and the town is funding the second day a week for space usage. We will be reapplying for this grant in fiscal year 26, and we hope to have this funding awarded again so that we can continue to sustain the current programs and space use that we are currently utilizing. There is an anonymous donor, which we, which is graciously providing funding for the use of the Masonic Lodge, three days a week for our yoga classes. The Friends of the North Reading Council on Aging provide funding for several exercise classes and other program support. In-kind donations also support program needs and supplies. We partner with Assisted Living, Royal Health Meadowview supplies some programming supplies for us on a regular basis, and several local businesses contribute as well. We have a very generous community, which, you know, we're very thankful for their support. And then lastly, volunteerism is a significant role of the senior center. Our volunteers help facilitate administrative support, assist in activity setup, breaking down tables, setting up tables several times a day at several, several locations in town. They serve our daily congregant meals and support our transportation services. It would not be possible to facilitate programs at four locations without these generous, dedicated, small army of volunteers. So this next slide, I will not get into all the numbers because I don't want to keep my colleagues here all night, but you can see that we continue to have an upward trend with participation in general at the senior center. Our active members from 2022 started off at about three hundred and eighty, and now we're at about seven hundred and ninety-one in 2024. We continue to see new faces every single day. Participation in all programs just continued to trend upward. In particular, our recreation social events rose to three thousand, forty-one last year participants. Our exercise program had five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three participants last year. The meal and nutrition program is a staple program. We serve meals daily. About a thousand meals were served in 2022, and we have served four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight meals last year alone. And thank you to our kitchen staff and volunteers that really just do all of this work. This doesn't include the twelve thousand home-delivered meals that are provided. We collaborate with Mystic Valley Elder Services, and those twelve thousand meals last year were delivered by Bob, our Meals on Wheels driver, works for Mystic Valley Elder Services, and he provides a wellness check on residents when he delivers these meals, just checking in, making sure they're safe, reporting any issues, and he gets in a lot of steps every single day. Lastly, the transportation, as I mentioned, the demand is very high. We started a transportation, a medical transportation volunteer program in 2023. There were nine volunteers that started, and now we have, I think we have twenty at this point. These volunteers that are residents in town provided a hundred and fifty one-way rides in 2023. This increased to six hundred and twelve one-way rides last year. So these volunteers are getting people to their medical appointments and filling a very big gap in, in the service area that we have here. And then our van drivers, in-town transportation has also increased tremendously. Our van drivers provided a little over two thousand rides in 2022. Last year, they provided six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two rides in town.
Just a quick question. In relation to the endeavors, I mean, you're saying you have five thousand people that exercise and fitness, but is it really kind of the seven hundred and some odd people that we're servicing here that are active members?
So they're, right, set, swiped in five thousand participants over the course of the year.
Right, but it's, it's pretty, people coming back every, every week.
People coming three days a week, five days a week, once a week.
But as far as the number of people that are really utilizing the services, it's not the five thousand, it's, is that within the seven hundred and eighty?
Yes.
So the, so the seven hundred and eighty?
So they're active.
Right, so the seven hundred and eighty active members are the ones who are participating in these services.
Correct.
All right, so that, that's the universal, that's the, the group of people that we're really servicing right now. About eight hundred people within this community are, on a regular basis, utilizing the services and senior center and other program that you have.
Yep, correct. Yep, some folks may use it every day.
Right.
And some folks, they participate less, but yes, that's correct.
That's right, okay, so it's, that's, that's who was servicing, plus the eight hundred people. They didn't get to participate more often than others, but it's, it's really about eight hundred people, which has more than doubled in the
Right.
Two years.
Yes.
Congratulations to you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Because it's, it's working.
Good vibe in the community, so.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah, the feedback has been terrific, too. There are a lot of lonely people, not as lonely as they were before, because of your efforts, so it's great. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands, it's not five thousand people, it's, it's really the eight hundred people that are
That are utilizing our programs and resources on a regular basis.
Thank you, yep, thank you.
You're welcome. So for resources and future goals, the senior center team has observed a growing demand for services and resources for aging adults in North Reading. As a central connection point for information and referrals, the center offers a wide range of services, including health and wellness programs, daily meals and nutrition programs, transportation services, health insurance counseling, and fuel assistance. The support provided by the center is crucial for helping aging adults connect with resources and maintain healthy lifestyles within the community. Looking ahead, the department will continue to sustain its services, pursue grant opportunities to support program costs, and hopefully fund our outreach coordinator position through town funding in the future. And we also want to develop strategies to meet the needs of residents as they age in North Reading. So the budget proposed proposal increase represents a level service budget at this time, and the increase that had been shown is just in anticipation of cost of office supplies, copier supplies, cost of living increases for staff, as well as membership dues for Massachusetts Council on Aging memberships. So this is our last slide with some folks living well and aging well in North Reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or any comments.
Just a few. Thank you, Kim. This is great. Program's certainly grown a lot over the last two years. Quick, quick question on the van riding. How does that process work? Would a senior call the senior center and say, hey, I need a ride, do you mind giving you filled appointment sort of?
So the in-town transportation is Monday through Friday on our vans. Residents can call if they can't drive, they're limiting their driving, they have an injury. We just do a quick intake form and have them sign a waiver, and then we just have them utilize our transportation. We have Market Basket trips weekly on Wednesday and stop and shop and trips around town, so we have two drivers on to facilitate those needs. Folks like to go out of town to Market Basket, it's a little bit more cost-effective. And then the medical transportation is a little bit more involved with case management, where the person will meet with our outreach coordinator or transportation coordinator and do a little bit of an intake. We need to see if this is safe for a volunteer to provide transportation, if they use devices, what kind of car they can get into. And then we have a software platform where we have all of our volunteers, the ride is submitted for someone to pick up if they choose to do so, and I don't think we've had, we've had a minimal of maybe one request that could be filled.
That's awesome. Thank you, I was just interested in the background, a bit, um, the Aldersgate and Masonic Lodge, I saw that we got anonymous donation, that's pretty awesome.
I have no information on that.
That's pretty great.
And we're very thankful for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I was just notified probably within a couple months, so.
Do you know what the cost per day to use that would be, or?
I don't have a cost, but I could ask.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Do, do we have any other buildings in town, through you, that could be used during the day besides those venues? I, I was trying to think, it's, just being told it was gone by, could.
I think we've exhausted
I'm sure you've exhausted.
Exhausted options, you know, we utilize the town hall.
Yeah, the Town Hall was a big one. We added, started adding programming here a couple of years ago. The gym being done, it's available, this room has been used, so that was another way to add to it. You know, there's limitations on the activity room in the library, if you get so much use during, during the week already, so it's not quite readily available, police train room, the parking is not great, so it's hard to get too much of it, but anyway, we are trying to make use, first the Town Hall, then Aldersgate, then the Sonic.
Yeah, no, it's great. Last question, the gentleman who rides for Meals for Wheels, is his last name Sasso?
Yeah.
Okay, I know, I know Bob Sasso, who does Meals for Wheels, he retired, and then continue on Meals for Wheels.
Okay.
Small world, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so, thank you, Kim. You know, you and Lil are doing a fantastic job.
Thanks.
Serving our seniors.
Thank you.
It's far different than it was ten years ago, that's for sure.
Yes.
In so many different ways. So fantastic job.
Thank you.
Would help you be a facility that we could potentially use?
So to utilize the facility, we need to go through the licensing.
Sorry, I can't hear.
To utilize a facility, we have to go through the licensing book, an event there, so that often will involve food service or something like that. It tends to be cost prohibitive, depending upon the type of event. There was a window of time, maybe two years, Mr. O'Leary, where there wasn't a licensed operator in there, we were sort of directly using the room at very little or no cost, but it just isn't.
I'm just thinking, downstairs basement area, that's just empty and.
It's not currently under.
The downstairs, over here, not the pump, the naked area that's downstairs, are you talking? That would need a significant amount of renovation. Headroom and piping is an issue, a large portion of it. I wouldn't say the basement is very useful.
And couldn't use the upstairs, because you're not doing anything during the day up there.
There's people, there's a license disruption.
I can't hear you.
We rent that out to someone.
Someone leases the entire building out.
Yeah.
In other words, you know, Ultra Sheek has control of the building.
Okay.
Since they're building to utilize, they, they rent it, they lease it out and.
Yeah, I've just never seen day activities going on during the whole time. All right, I'll move on. So what keeps you up at night?
You're really one of them.
Yeah, a lot of calls up there. What's keeping you up at night about this whole speed?
Sustainability.
It's what?
Sustainability.
Sustainability.
Of, you know, having so many volunteers, support operations day-to-day and not maxing out the volunteers.
Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully being re-awarded Massachusetts Council on Aging Grant Funding and, you know, transportation funding, because those are not guaranteed. The state funding is, but the rest is not.
Yeah, I've had people call me saying, without the transportation opportunities you've been given, they would have left town a long time ago, and that's the last thing we want to see people do. So I don't know how we can come in with levels of this budget here. I think that your membership is growing, is, is growing, continues to grow, probably will continue to grow even further. We know the population is increasing, and that's been predicted for a long time, I believe it's going to be forty percent, not thirty-five. And so I, I think that we have to find ways to fund, to fund this more for you, because we shouldn't be living on the edge of disaster. And, and why does that make fiscal sense? Because if you keep the seniors in their homes, you keep the school population at a reasonable level, and the seniors are the benefactors of the schools. So if you don't have enough seniors in town, you can't support your schools. So it makes fiscal sense that we do all we can to keep our seniors in their homes, aging in place, and having healthy programs that will keep them here longer. So I don't know how we can do this on a level services budget. I'm strongly advocating that we find ways to find money. I know that comes out of other departments or some other source, but it just has to be done, and it makes fiscal sense that we want that for everybody, for the entire community. That's my opinion, and I'd be happy to help you try to figure that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, and thanks to the staff and all the volunteers for doing what you've done. It's a really impressive.
For doing good things.
Kim, just kudos to you and your staff, just what you've done since you started is just amazing, to see how many people are accessing. That you have to actually go outside and use other facilities to be able to do it. Great job. The transportation, I was on the ground level of that committee being started and to see how, I mean, it was so questionable, the whole volunteer thing, is that going to work? Are people actually going to volunteer? To see that, just kudos to you too, Will, because I know you worked hard on that, so great job. I think you deserve a round of applause.
You're a playing team.
You do.
We do.
And thank you to all of you.
So just, just looking at the, at the numbers for the current fiscal year, you've got almost twenty-two percent of the budget that you're operating on there is either grants or contributions, gifts.
Correct.
Right, so that's one of the reasons you can toss and turn at night and say, twenty-two percent of our budget is double. The other, the other thing, the other question I have is, I mean, space is an issue, especially last week about the Seating Center and all the rest, well, you know, that's years down the road. In the meantime, budget that you're operating on there is either grants or contributions, gifts.
Correct.
Right. So that's one of the reasons you can toss a turn at night and say, 22% of our budget is double. The other thing, the other question I have is, I mean, space is an issue. A little discussion last week about the seating sector and all the rest, well, you know, that's years down the road. In the meantime, we still have a needs. Have you identified any other facilities that may be available to require some funding for either sporadic use or a regular basis? I know the Masonic, Alders Gate, but there are maybe other facilities around town that may be available just due to lack of funding. You would have a better space for some of this programming. And I know, you know, MS classes, it works well down here in the gym, but it's almost maxed out. There are almost 40 people here.
Right. It's almost at capacity.
Yeah, so it's at capacity, and you have a growing demand. You know, we need to find some space, some additional space to utilize in the intro, until we find some other solution here, whether we can get some access to the second floor, the third meeting house. But that's going to take, again, some commitment on the bottom. Retire the community, get an elevator in there and bring it up the code. But we have a facility there that's totally unutilized, and before we go and build new things, it's fix what we have. But in addition to that, if there's other spaces out there that we need funding for, please don't be shy to ask them. We may not have the funds to do it, but it needs to be brought to our attention so that we can help prioritize where the funding should be going. Again, yours is one of the fastest-growing programs in the community in relation to meeting needs and population selfless change, the demographics and all this stuff. So don't be shy. And again, if you have some ideas, you know, share it. Let's see what we can do. You know, again, we're so grateful for everybody in the community here that donates and funding 5% of the budget anyway. But the grant programs, they're all at risk right now.
Right.
So, you know, you're talking about 25%, 30% cut to your budget, and we have a lot of funding right now that's at risk.
And also, we just have to be mindful of spreading out any further with the staffing that I have to facilitate.
That's the other thing. Happy staffing is through grants too.
Right.
And volunteers.
That's fat. Volunteers. Yeah.
But thank you for coming here and highlighting, you know, what you've done, the programs, they're all available, but also how well you're managing it right now, with the resources that you dispose of. And to Trig's point, I don't disagree. It needs to grow, and we'll address that at some point, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the final question?
I have a question. Actually, just a clarification of a couple things. Clarification on the anonymous donor, are you saying that that's new this year?
I was just, I was notified by the Masonic Lodge. They were discussing, they want to help the community, there's a board, and didn't want to charge us, and just stated that an anonymous donor will pick up any fee associated, what, with building costs? You know, they plow and sand and do that privately.
And will this allow you to now do programs in Masonic Lodge, or had you been doing them before?
We have been doing them.
Okay.
Yes, we have been doing them three days a week, probably for over a year.
Okay.
Yep.
And I guess the other question I had is, what is the total of the sort of at-risk funding? I guess you could include that number as well, but the grant, the sort of uncertain grant funding, maybe if you just, I think he said 22%.
It's around 22%.
So there's about $58,000 in state formula grants, and there's $13,500 in fiscal year that were gifts. So of a $329,000 budget. You can't, you get $70,000 to $71,000 funded from outside sources.
And are the state grants, what's the, you know, are they likely to be renewed? Or are they, is it totally up in the air, some years yes, some years no?
Formula grant funding has been consistent based on the census from the last federal census.
Yeah.
The other funds are not.
Year to year.
They're year to year. It depends on the Massachusetts Council on Aging Grants. There's a lot of work to manage those grants on our end with every little line item we see from Market Basket.
Yep.
So a lot of reporting. It depends on how many Council on Ages or Senior Centers apply for those grants, how much funding is available. We've been awarded twice. I don't know if they'll continue to award that.
Yeah, okay.
Same thing with transportation grants.
Yep. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Benzelli, quick question. Is there any reason why a senior center from other towns wouldn't go for a grant? I'm just curious as to why every town wouldn't go for it.
Because they have enough funding, so they don't need to do the backend of the reporting and application process. It takes time to, and we did apply for other grants that we were not awarded last year. It takes time to apply for the grants and then to do all the invoicing and reporting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Question, a clarification. As far as the budget that you're presenting here, it doesn't necessarily reflect like what Mystic Valley Elder Services provides to those seniors, correct? It's not in the, the?
No, no, like home care services or that, that is.
What about the meals?
So.
That's not in here. That's not in there.
That's not in here?
There's not in.
Oh, no, that's not in here.
That's all state, I mean, that's all state grant funding Mystic Valley Elder Services.
Yes. So that's our aging.
And again, Jackie's salary, 15 hours state, 20 hours federal, that's not in the, that's not shown in your budget here, right?
No, she's, no, not in the budget.
So when you're talking about, well, the half your staffing.
Right.
Isn't even shown here as part of the picture, as to the services that seniors are getting. And, you know, the 22% that I'm talking about is just of the numbers that are embedded. It really is probably close to 40% of what the services that are provided, primarily grants and the costs associated with programming and the services that are provided.
Correct.
Is greater than what we're talking about.
Right.
So again, as we talk about grant funding being at risk, whether it be from a federal level that trickles on all the way down, I understand why you're tossing a turn. No, really, you know, so it's, that's what, we have a better understanding. Half your staff this year. That's because other people and other agencies.
They're helping human service needs.
Right.
These aren't really wants.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You've figured out how to do a lot but less, and that's, you know, that's hard to do, right? And, you know, it's great that there's a lot of people that volunteer their time or money with donations that they can. One thing, and you don't have to give any info tonight, but like, what I'd like to see, because it's interesting when you showed that chart, that one there, estimated population over 60. I don't know if we have data for the last 30 years that you can get in 10-year increments that shows the percentage. I'm like more of a percentage guy, meaning that, I see that number, but what is a percentage of the total possible?
It used to be like 15%. It's gone to 13%.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm just curious, because like, then you can identify trends, but then also you can go back to past budgets and say, okay, if this isn't happening and going up, was there a cut or a request said no to, to try to future out? Like, you know, you're just trying to see that, you know, is there, is there a number where maybe temporarily it shifted, or has it always gone up? I'm just curious. You don't have to answer that, because it's a lot of, but if we have those numbers, just because percentage-wise, it would put it more in perspective. And, you know, I think that when you're trying to explain it to those that aren't as aware of the issue, I'll be honest, like a lot of people in my peer group, percentages just, they pop out more. Because then it becomes, well, guess what? I was at a meeting last night, and 4,700 people in North Reading are over the age of 60. Well, how many people do we have in North Reading? And then, and then it becomes like, you get lost in the message before you even started, because now it's like, well, are you giving me all the numbers that I need to determine whether or not it's actually a big deal or not? You know, so that, just, whatever, no rush.
Yeah, we can certainly get that.
But I know, we really appreciate everything you do, and it's, you know, I've seen it here five years on the board, and somehow, yes, with the state, it's been a little easier because of that, but definitely not the worst thing to have a contingency plan, because I think that's what everybody's been getting at in the, you know, I mean, again, we've been, we've been flush at the state level too, for a while. And a lot of that had to do a lot of money from the federal government, especially during COVID, and that, but, you know, money dries up at some point, and then everybody, you know, as Mr. Har, you were thinking about before, the trickle-down is the truth, so thank you.
Just as a, if you look at the population here right now, and the 800 people that are being serviced, 17% of our population over 60 are now currently utilizing the services. Two years ago was half of that. So as far as the need, the outreach that's being done, Kim, through our Veterans Agent, everybody else, it's just going to exponentially get bigger, and the demands are going to get bigger as this population grows. But the good thing is, is that people are getting services, and more people are taking advantage of it. But as that happens, we need to make the resources available to address it. So you've, you know, you've got 17% of this population right now utilizing the services of active members in the community, going to senior center, using the program. That's pretty good. You know, and it's only going to grow. And again, as it goes out there, it's going to even grow.
17% is using that.
You've got 800 out of 4,700, 800 people out of 4,700 people are already utilizing the services.
Yes.
Senior population, but we're talking about elder services here. Yeah, so 18% are currently utilizing. Two years ago was half of that. You know, so the program is working, the outreach is working, and we have to keep up with the demand. And there's more demand, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying so late.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. McKnight.
Mr. Rob Long asking for an raise.
Yeah, I think this is the next, the next bunch.
You got to a whole four slides this year? Wow.
It's smaller than last year.
Can you share, share that too?
Yeah, sure. Wait, let me start the slideshow first. Oh, no, that was a dumb thing, didn't it? Okay. Okay. The planning department and the CPC in this past fiscal year have devoted substantial time to zoning initiatives. This is included working through the requirements of the 3A MBTA communities legislation, including its numerous changes. The CPC has also responded to changes this year in FEMA requirements for development permitting in flood zones and the new release of the flood insurance rate maps with new compliant, with a new compliant zoning bylaw, which was passed at the January 2025 special town meeting. Additionally, the CPC drafted and was successful in passing new zoning bylaws regulating accessory dwelling units in response to state changes allowing ADUs in all communities. The CPC's changes allowed for some regulation in these units as allowed within the restrictions of state law. The CPC's short-term rental unit bylaw prohibiting rentals of less than 31 days was also passed at the January town meeting. Other projects have included completion of the EDC's promotional video for the town and working toward the disposition of 7 St. Teresa Street for affordable housing. As a result of the RFP process, Habitat for Humanity was selected as the recipient of that property, and closing is anticipated soon. Permitting activity included a 30-unit cluster development, and there were some changes to subdivisions and site plan reviews previously permitted and pretty, oh.
Aren't you reading off the next slide?
Yes. Yep, okay. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Okay. As they do yearly, the CPC will discuss a work plan early in the summer to choose priority projects and zoning initiatives for the coming year. However, no project would require an increase in the CPC's operating budget for the year. Expected work will include continuing to update the subdivision and site plan review regulations, maintaining consistency with the town's MS4 permit, working with the EDC to identify underutilized properties on Main and Concord Streets, working towards sidewalk projects identified in the Complete Streets Plan, such as Central Street, and planning for improvements to Route 28. Most line items in the CPC budget this year remain unchanged. Reductions have been made to the repairs and maintenance and other supplies line items. As a result, the department is asking for $1,950 less than last fiscal year. The professional services other line item includes the estimated fee for membership in the regional housing services office, which is again anticipated to be $15,500 in FY '26, the same as in FY '25. The regional service, the regional office has expanded to include two additional communities, Stonem and Woburn. The previous contract with our consultant, Ansor Advisors, has expired, and presently communities are putting out a new RFP to seek a new consultant. And as a result, housing-related requests are temporarily being handled internally in the planning department. So we are only charged for the consultant hours that are used for North Reading. So we don't anticipate spending our full budget amount that's already been allocated for this fiscal year. With a new consultant expected to be under contract before the beginning of FY '26, we would expect to expend the full amount during FY '26. But there's no requested increase in this line item. And there are no other changes proposed in the CPC budget this year.
Questions?
Just curious, what repairs and maintenance, what goes under that line item?
Well, it used to be typewriter maintenance that was done every year. We don't need that anymore.
Good credit.
Because actually, the company changed or went out of business. Something happened. We don't need it. We don't need it. Yeah, the repairs and maintenance had been, oh, we used to have a Conica Minolta contract that was only for the planning department, and it used to come out of that, but we don't have that contract anymore. So just looking over the past few years, there were just some items that we weren't using that just got back, just got put back at the end of the year, and we just don't need to reverse them anymore.
Any else?
Finance?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to leave my flashback here, because the conservation presentation is also on. I just have to figure out how to. You're welcome.
Thank you. There's nothing interesting.
All right. Hello, my name's Lydia Eldridge. This first slide shows the activities from 2024 and some objectives the Conservation Commission has spoken up for 2025. The main part of what the Conservation Commission does is implement the Wetlands Protection Act, which is a state law, and institute its regulations. And so you can see the numbers there. Those are the number of permits and documents that the commission reviewed and discussed and approved at their public meetings in 2024. We also addressed a number of violations and enforcement orders, as well as how additional discussions related to conservation matters. We have begun enhancing the efficiency and creating an improved tracking system, or just creating a tracking system in general. We have two new voting members on the board and two new associate members that have joined in the past few months. And the, a big goal is to continually engage property owners to promote compliance with the wetland laws. And so the objectives for this year, this month, actually, the board will be voting to update the fees and regulations. It's covered, but this has not been changed since 2001. So the fees are quite outdated, and they will be increasing a lot, I guess. And they We also addressed a number of violations and enforcement orders, as well as how additional discussions related to conservation matters. We have begun enhancing the efficiency and creating an improved tracking system, or just creating a tracking system in general. We have two new voting members on the board and two new associate members that have joined in the past few months. And the, a big goal is to continually engage property owners to promote compliance with the wetland laws. And so the objectives for this year, the, this month, actually, the board will be voting to update the fees and regulations. It's covered, but this has not been changed since 2001. So the fees are quite outdated, and they will be increasing a lot, I guess. And they want to revisit action items that were done under the Open Space and Recreation Plan that they came up with in conjunction with the Land Use Committee. They want to identify and certify vernal pools, which are a really sensitive ecosystem. And a big new thing they really want to do is expand education outreach efforts in towns. And so some of the things they discussed is having a booth at the North Reading Town Day, educating the public, fostering awareness and collaboration. They would like to work more closely with the LUC and sustainability community to address broader issues in the town, look at invasive species removal, update the digital filing system, and increase organizational efficiencies, follow up on outstanding orders of conditions. So if someone has a project, they, when they're done, they have to get these orders of conditions, and if they don't, it makes their life very complicated. And there are many, many, many open order of conditions in town, which is really unfortunate for property owners who oftentimes don't know that their property has that. So that's a big thing we're hoping to address. And also dedicate more resources to open space management, which previously hasn't really been done. And so this just shows the budget from fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2026 and what the changes are. I will detail what the specific changes are. You'll see the biggest changes in personnel, personal services. And that's mostly just me, because I'm in full time. They're adding to the role, me being the floodplain administrator and managing town-owned land. But really, allotted it will be doing things that haven't been done in many, many years, such as closing open order of conditions. Other items that are increasing, the purchase of the services, that really is just training and education. So there's a larger board, there are new members, so more training that they need to go through. Increase in dues for MACC, which is the Massachusetts Conservation, Massachusetts Association for Conservation Commissions. And then missed capital expense for one-time supplies. So when the former agent left, she was an independent contractor, and she had her own wetland delineation supplies. The town no longer has those, which is pretty limiting for the department. This, the details of what the courses are and why there is such a large increase, we can look at that in more detail later if you want. There's the information. These are really the main one-time supplies that we need. These are actually extremely low prices that I was able to find. Dead drawgers can go for like five, $600, but they're really critical in identifying where wetlands are. And that is my presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, on behalf of the Forest Committee, working on the Swan Pond Trails, your committee has been very collaborative, very engaged. I've been finding, I've never really worked directly with you before, but you've been, your group has been really opened my eyes up to things I hadn't thought of before to the whole committee. So I want to, I appreciate very much your input on doing that. And also, you may want to collaborate also with Martin's Pond Association, who is, you know, taking a very active role in trying to control the invasive species in the pond.
Yeah, they have an ongoing permit with the Conservation Commission for regular.
So you do check in on occasion?
Yeah, so every year they submit a report to the commission.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, great. Thank you very much for all you do. And again, you have the very invigorated committee members, so it's really nice to have that kind of participation on important topics. Thank you. Mr. Massey?
Thank you for your presentation. Very detailed, too.
Do you mind going to your budget real quick? Can you give a, what's the majority? So your department's asking for a 50% increase, just about.
So, sorry, I should have actually explained this more. The increase for my position becoming full time comes from the Conservation Commission, fees that they collect. So when permits come through under the Wetlands Protection Act, they legally must go toward conservation matters. They do not go to the Town General Fund. So the funding for my role becoming full time is coming out of that fund that is dedicated to conservation and wetland matters.
The other thing I want to say is kudos to increasing your fees. I do know, understand a few of these other departments that'll come forward are also increasing their fees to get with the times. And I think those are the little things, whether it's building department or the Board of Health, the weights and measures, increasing the fees to the towns around us are the little things that will help North Reading stay afloat and help continue to keep the lights on, help continue to staff our department. So thank you for raising those fees. And those are the one-time fees that don't hurt everyone, but if you want to go through something, they pay a little more, but that's kind of how, in my opinion, how North Reading can recover a little of those costs. So thank you.
First of all, personally, thank you for all your efforts and assisting in the screening of candidates to serve on the Conservation Commission. As the board is well aware, we had a real need and put the word out, and we had a lot of applicants. And it was fantastic and you did a terrific job of assisting and giving us recommendations. You've also done a fantastic job of filling the void that your predecessor left, and you picked right up and taken right off with it. So I can appreciate all, all that you've done. And again, the commission has done a terrific job of handling the community, because most of the times when people come before the Conservation Commission, they're looking for some sort of relief, and sometimes you can't give it. And as far as the orders and conditions, people don't find out about it until they're ready to sell their house, and then they think, oh, my God. Sometimes it's a little more complicated than others, and it still takes the Conservation Commission to assist them in getting it through and clearing up the matters of the restrictions can be taken care of. And I know one recent one that you stepped right up and assisted those people in the sale of homes. These are longtime residents who didn't even know at the time that they had closed it out. So again, for all the efforts that you're doing, which you're looking for. And again, the town administrator has already made a pitch to the board in relation to the increase in the hours for the, for the position, and it makes limited sense for some of the resources that were needed in order to meet the demands, just happen right there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much, and happy to see that there are people volunteering and getting that going again. Personal services, is that, that's your, yeah, so that's, that's not part of what you're asking for, right? Because that, you're saying that's funded by the fees?
Correct. So the, that total request that you see there is representative of the full-time department, which is Lydia, and apartheid, is the administrative assistant for agenda position. So there's two positions that are funded in that amount. On an earlier slide in the revenue plan, they had two lines over in there for conservation fees without the popularity yet. So there will be an offset from the, the fees that were identified that are conservation-directed to address that increase that you see in the budget there. The rest is funded presently with the town, the town funding.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Sue Duplin, town clerk, here to present my FY26 budget. Last year was an extremely busy election year. We held six elections, which included a district-wide recount. All elections thankfully ran smoothly and without issues. The integrity of elections was upheld. I'd like to personally thank my department staff, Stephanie and Delaney, my election workers, the North Reading Police Department, and DPW, who all worked hard assisting me for another successful election year. I'd like to update everybody on the town clerk department technology. For, I purchased four additional pole pads. We now own nine, which allowed me to double the pole pads, check-in stations at each precinct for the presidential election. The additional pole pads also came in handy during our advanced removal deposit sessions for early voted ballots. We had thousands. We also use them for in-person early voting and town meeting check-in. For the presidential election, I also doubled the voting machines at each precinct. By doubling the pole pads and voting machines, allow voting process to move efficiently and quickly, which was a game changer for the presidential election. At our June 2024 town meeting, a capital request was voted to fund eight new voting tabulators. Our current machines are 20 years old. They work fine, however, they are no longer being manufactured and parts are becoming scarce. I'm currently in the process of purchasing new machines. Difference between what we have now and the new image cast is we'll be getting the latest and the greatest in voting technology. These machines here, I'm very familiar with these machines. I've used them previously. They work the same way as the Accu-Votes that we have now, keep a ballot. Same ballot goes through these machines, it's the same vendor we use now. The only difference here is the voter actually has to hit, if they want to cast a ballot, they hit the cast, the green button. If they want to return it, they hit the red button. So the voter actually has to pick what they want to do at the time of voting.
Can you explain that a little bit? Why would you return it?
So the machine is, like they are now, the machines are programmed to reject blank ballots and overbought ballots. So sometimes the machine will spit out, and maybe you change your mind, you know, if you're looking at it real quick, it spits out, or wait a minute, you know, you voted for two people, so you can get up to three ballots. You can have two voided and get up to three. So it's up to the voter to press that button.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The ballot box itself is...
That's so someone can say that they voted for all of us. I voted for him. Did you? The sheet will spit it out. Nope, put it in there.
There's a display on the machine, it tells you exactly what's going on, unlike what we have now. The ballot box is a bigger ballot box that the machine sits on. Sometimes during a presidential election, the ballot box gets full, and we have to either pat it down or empty it, and then put the ballots next to what's secured with a police officer. This ballot box will never have to be emptied.
Actually, Sue Duplin, I'm going to stop you real quick while it's fresh air. Any questions on this? Because there is another item later on, but to save you from having to stay until we get there, I'm going to call the motion now on it for Agenda 11. It's to approve these, correct?
Yes.
So if there's any other questions before we take it up? I figure it was just opportune since we're talking about it.
Soon have to hang around any longer that she needs to.
So the board has to vote at least 60 days before use of the new machines. We're kind of cutting it close here now, so not to put you on the spot. It's on the agenda, so.
Mr. Chairman, as required pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34, I moved at the time of North Reading vote to use the image cast precinct tabulators, beginning with the May 6, 2025 town election, and thereafter in all future local, state, federal preliminary, primary, and general elections held in the town of North Reading. And with that, to discontinue the use of the Accu-Vote optical scan tabulators.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Any none of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, testing on these, there's a process we have to do before the election, testing and all that. It's a game changer. We have multiple cards, we have spare cards, we have advanced removal deposit cards that we have to test. There's a lot of cards. So these machines allow us to double up on the cards that we test during testing. So we plan on using them, the new machines that you just voted tonight for the May 6 town election. Thank you. Next technology, excuse me, is the town meeting clickers. At our October 2024 special town meeting, it was voted to fund clickers. We have since purchased and received 1,000 clickers. We'll be having a few small group trainings prior to our June town meeting. We will actually get to use them for the first time. With that, I have no special capital request for my FY26 budget. Thank you for appropriating my previous requests. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Oh, I'm not done yet.
Oh. Well, you paused.
Professional pause.
I had to switch my page.
Our gratitude might change.
From my FY26 budget, funds one election. Our May 5, 2026 town election, a decrease of three elections from FY25. Election increases and or decreases also affect certain aspects of the town clerk's records budget. And since some of the election expenses overlap within the records expenses, depending on the variables of each election, expenses can range from $18,000 to $25,000 per election. Only scheduled elections are planned and budgeted. Per Mass. General Law, Chapter 503 of the Acts of 1983, we do receive early voting reimbursement from the state consisting of both vote-by-mail and in-person early voting. Some of the reimbursement is postage for each ballot in 97 cents a piece to mail. We mailed thousands last year. And any early voting in-person expenses above and beyond the mandated regular business hours. In other words, the two nights they were open late till 8 o'clock on the Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have mandated to do in-person early voting on the weekends, six hours. We do eight hours. My staff overtime that works in-person early voting, above and beyond the regular mandated hours, those are all reimbursed from the state. You may wonder what is involved in elections expenses, which does tie into my records expenses. These are all your expenses. Depending on the election, some are more than others. In other words, a presidential primary, you know, presidential election, there's a lot on the ballots, which obviously would cost more. So they do tie into each other. So for my FY26, I am respectfully requesting a 75 cent increase for all my election workers. So to the left is what they currently get. So there's three types of positions you see. So this is what the warden gets, and to bring them up to, you know, 75 cents more is 1825. The reason why I'm asking this is because you see the checkers, the ballot box attendants and readers, they are below minimum wage. So 75 cents increase would bring them to minimum wage, which would then increase the others another 75 cents as well, to bring the rates to the ones listed on the rate. The last time they were increased was three years ago, and it was 75 cents per position. For FY26, as I mentioned, we have one scheduled election. Therefore, you will see that I reduced my budget accordingly by 17%. Therefore, you will see that I reduced my budget accordingly by 17%. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Last year, you left out the special election to the override.
That was last fiscal year. That was in June.
Oh, that's right. Last fiscal year. Sorry.
I didn't forget how many elections I had last year.
It seems like every time we turned it around, there was another election.
Yeah.
Finance?
Oh, I'm sorry. The clickers, do we, are you and Mr. Gilberto or the town general IT trained in these clickers so when town meeting does happen that there's no technology hiccups?
We are not yet, so we have the clickers in my office. We are gonna plan a small group meeting, probably multiple times, you know, with IT, myself, my department, Will, and Mike, of course, and the town moderator. So of course, we know what we're doing before we present in the town meeting. Very simple. I showed you a picture. It's just yes and no. Amendments can be made right on the spot. Very simple. You're welcome.
Just a question, is there a cap on the state reimbursement limit for early voting?
No. So what happens is I have to do a certification on the costs of above and beyond. So it's the postage for every ballot mailed. There is no cap. It goes based on the expenses. So obviously, the higher the expense, you know, the more we receive. It's above and beyond a regular mandated, you know, in-person early voting, those type of things.
True. I'm sorry, real quick, this, this gentleman's question, is, is there, I forgot, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
Does the reimbursement from the state include town elections?
Yes. So it now includes early voting, because there's early voting. So yes, any ballot that we mail, right? I mean, right now, it's 97 cents a ballot, so it does, yes, that is factored in.
I mean, you had like $3,500 or something or more last time, but people have to renew that if they want to do it again for this year.
Yes, correct.
For the May election, right?
Yes.
Where are you at now as far as that is for that?
Um, for applications?
Yeah.
No, I don't have an, they're coming in daily, so I didn't run a total.
Okay, just curious. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's what's nice of the state. That's a case of a state mandate, which is, needs to be funded. So that's good. And they're funding it, where they pass it, they're funding it, as opposed to what they did in the other one, or didn't do it. Great, thank you. So again, Stephanie Delaney and myself, nothing but accolades from the public comes in and seeks assistance and, you know, you're doing a great job there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, election workers, that's a long day.
Last year was a rough year, all around.
You and your staff do a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We'll make a progress. We get to flip the agenda over here.
Don't give me an idea how much I mean. I'm debating whether or not we need to, we need to speak tonight to 13 or 14. I think we've talked enough. Let's see what time it is. Is baseball season?
Oh, yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm IT and POC's director, and this is William Brown. I'm gonna try and make this quick, because I know you guys had a long night. A lot of stuff, you guys know what we do, so we'll go through these slides as quick as we can. So this is, this is basically, we want to explain, this is a breakdown of who we are as a department, and obviously, I'm the POC's director. We have the operations director, Maria, and recreation director, Nancy, and POC's leader, Maciano. Just wanted to highlight here, in red is, and in the green is what the town supports us and subsidizes us with. In the red, it's all in asterisks, it's all the people in the department that's covered by the, that's covered by the, sorry, that's covered by the POC's direct enterprise through user fees and such. And the program is, the programs that, so that's basically the, recreation office is inclusive program for all ages, from toddlers, ready adults, and seniors, residents and non-residents. They're pretty popular. You'll see the growth, it's been amazing. And these are the things that they offer, programs they offer. As you can see, from FY '22 to '24, we've seen an 18% growth in registrations. This is just from 2562 a year up to 3122, and a 25% growth in first-time registrations. With the other number on the other side is people that do multiple programs, but from '22 to '24, the first-time registrations grown immensely to 380. You all know, because we've done it before, presented in front of you, the POC's department takes care of approximately 93 acres of POC's lands. You can see we've permitted over 11,440 this past year between the high school sports that we have to schedule around, youth leagues, adult leagues, clubs, rentals, and other permanent things for events. Thousands of people visit the parks every day, every year, and I R P alone, over 50,000 people from youth and adult leagues have visited the park each year. We've seen 90%, 7% growth in park and field permits from reservations from '22 to '24. Although the population has grown, foot traffic has increased, the department has remained the same with only three permanent people and seasonal staff, which includes three seasonal staff members from May to August, typically college kids that need a job. And then we have Mr. Giadano, who does an amazing job taking care of, making sure all the parks are clean every day. We're a subsidized enterprise through the way the system works, and our services are financed through the subsidy through the town and through user fees, permits in recreation fees. A great, some of the costs are covered by those fees, but I think the residents of the community should know that the majority of the stuff we take care of does not generate revenue, but we still need to take care of it. And that subsidy helps us keep those parks maintained and safe for the residents of the town. And there's just a list of, you know, breakdown of what we do and what acreage there is that we handle with myself and two, two full-time employees. So when our enterprise revenue exceeds the actual, the net revenue is certified by the state as retained earnings. Over the past few years, the town has used to, used close to 200,000 of retained earnings towards parks and playgrounds, improvements and repairs, reducing the need for capital funds from the taxpayers. This is just a list of the things. We had a very busy year, Lake Susan-Duplin, with all the state funding and town contributions and just funds from donations or enterprise funds from LUC or friends of, donations from friends of. We've accomplished a lot, and we're getting, we're almost complete with, we haven't completed the majority of, we're looking forward to our kids bar opening up in the spring. That's gonna be a huge addition to this community with all the other things that already have been completed. We have to thank the state and Brad Jones and Senator Ta for the contributions we got from the state, because we wouldn't be able to do it without them. A lot of it was much needed, and it's good to, a lot of them are completed, and so we can start up new things, I guess. So overall, we're not looking for anything different. We're just, the town's budget, we're gonna, we're coming in with the same request from the town to subsidize the directors' positions that they have in the past and a portion of maintenance craft that we have. Although we'd like to add a new person, we just know it's not in the cards this year with the economic situation, but I know that we, if things keep growing at this pace or we keep adding more things, then I don't, we're just, we're just trying to do our best. Our recreation programs have soared through the roof with the registrants that they have. Nancy and Ashley have done a great job, and Heidi have provided the services to this town to add more programs, and it's just grown tremendously. And that's it. Told you I'd be quick. Marty, have any questions?
No, Marty, just want to commend you and your staff. I see how much you guys do, even the staff you have, I'm surprised you can do it. So thank you. I know you guys, you say you're doing your best, it really is the best, so thank you. And, thank you.
Yeah, we say it year after year, thank you. Such a great job in keeping the town looking beautiful, and kudos to, to all the registration going up. You're doing something right, so thank you so much, everybody.
We have a great team, and we truly do.
It shows.
And a great, a great committee that supports us and does a lot of things that go unnoticed, the barbecues and all that stuff.
Just a quick question, you're doing a great job. Can you grab, you know, community hours from the high school kids to help out during the summer?
Um, we do, but not, not, not for what I need, you know, they can't run equipment and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe they can help out with summer skate or something like that?
Yeah, we, we use the student third community, so we use them more for that, like the...
Special events.
Special events and the barbecues and stuff like, things like that.
All right. Yeah, love you. Thank you.
No, just the resources that we have is fantastic, but, you know, in order to maintain it's, you and a couple other people. I mean, the fields are in fantastic shape, but we always get compliments from people who, like you said, but outside the community as far as people coming recreating, to use the facilities. And again, the scheduling of events, 11,000 hours of whatever it was, is just unfathomable for me.
That's not me, that's the office.
Oh, I know. That's the office. It's unbelievable, and again, the use of the, the fields and the high school field and all the rest of it. It's a lot of work, and we have a few people to do it, and you're doing a fantastic job. I mean, look at it, you've got an $850,000 budget that you're operating here, a parks and recreation, and the number of people that it serves in the community isn't just kids. So it's, it really is, for what it's costing us, it's a bargain. So you've done a fantastic job, and everybody appreciates it, for sure. Thank you very much.
If you had more space, you could do more. True, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was Marty, and I agree, great job, as always. I certainly agree that there's no room for a new person, but if you had a new person, do you have a sense of, what's the relationship between adding a person, for instance, and increasing the revenue to the enterprise? Is a person you're envisioning more sort of backfilling things you aren't able to get to, or is it new programs or, you know, additional opportunities?
I think it's backfilling the things that we should be, could be doing better. A lot of people don't realize too, I mean, we have to adapt from mother nature, mother maiden, you know, we have to prioritize certain things. That's how...
Yep, so it's more of a backfill than...
Absolutely.
We'd be, you know, doing X number more programs that would generate X number of revenue. I, I get that, yep.
You guys take care of, excuse me, you guys take care of, oh, excuse me, you guys take care of the high school baseball field as well?
We share, only during the summertime when, when we permit out.
Okay.
We work with the school on certain school fields. The hood school, we take care of, like with the baseball field aspect, we do because we permit it out and we usually use it more than they do and vice versa. Like the little school, we permit out for youth softball. Once school's over, we take care of that because it's us using it, so we take care of that as well.
Playing at the, as a baseball coach, you guys do a tremendous job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, what can I say? They said it all. I mean, you know, and you also have time to, for some reason, want to ump my little league baseball. One of the parents in North Reading, so kudos to that. So, but again, no, thank you, and it's, I appreciate you being able to continue to provide it without, I know you're understaffed a little bit, I heard you apologize yourself. Well...
Thank you.
And thank you second round. Hold up, yeah. Thank you.
Paid for by the friends.
Yes, yeah.
Not on the budget.
You've been being here.
Thank you.
And you can, you can go ahead.
Thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity to present the FY '26 library budget. I'm Sharon Tyler, the library director, and this is Tyler Simpson, the assistant director. As you can see, our budget request, $788,598. The only expenses we have, this is a level services budget that we are presenting. The only changes are the required assessment from the Meramec Valley Library Consortium, MBLC, where we do all of our interactions with the 37 other libraries. And then the electronic subscriptions and the books materials is actually just a swap. We're constantly looking at what our patrons need and want and what's being used, and overdrive advantage is a great program that will allow our patrons in North Reading to have less of a wait for e-content and ebooks. So we just, we just switch the lines for them. And then the additional is just renewals and vendor costs that we have to increase. Other than that, between salary or actual obligations, there are, there are zero increases. It's just what we, I'm sorry, just what you see here, a level services budget. And this budget request does meet the MAR to be a certified library, and I just want to provide quick, very quick context to what, what that means and why it's important. For a public library to be certified, there are certain things that have to... For a public library to be certified, there are certain things that have to, we have to meet. One of them is the municipal appropriation requirement, and as you can see the calculation for that, and it is just meant for, the state provides, so no matter what the budgets are for a town, the library will get the same amount. It won't be funded different than other, other departments. So in order for us to qualify for, to be certified, we have to make sure we meet the MAR every year, and our, the budget that we're requesting does do that. Also, the minimum standards of free public library service, residents may not be charged for libraries, materials, or services. And the library must be open a minimum number of hours based on the population. And once you go over fifteen thousand, we have to be open fifty hours a week. We are open fifty-one hours because it was more consistent, and we did that in two thousand fourteen, and we've stayed the same up until now. And then the other part is the materials expenditure. We have to spend fifteen percent of the operating budget on materials for direct patron use, and that is a big number for us to have to do. And we don't rely just on the town's operating budget, we use state aid money to make up that difference. We also use a lot of the Friends money, our volunteer organization, to pay for museum passes and things, and that's where we're able to get up to the fifteen percent. And then we have to show annual reports to show our compliance. We love showing this slide. I, I always say that the library offers so many services that you don't always have to look at numbers, but I know that statistics do matter, and it's, we're really proud to show this slide because in the bottom, the digital circulation, as we know, ebooks, e-content, that is soaring. It's up thirty-four percent from last year, and it continues to grow, and that's why we're addressing it with our overdrive advantage to help our residents get books faster, or e-content faster. However, the top slide, the print circulation, people are still, still reading-
Yeah.
Right, still reading books and DVDs, video games, so even that's up two point seven percent. So as digital circulation grows, the print circulation is still staying, staying the same, so we're, we're proud of that. It's not a direct correlation, people want both. And then our twenty twenty-four library highlights, we're always proud to show our active patrons, that's maybe almost half the population. We do purge that every two years if someone hasn't used the library, the library card or haven't gone on to use any digital resources, it does get purged. So those are active library patrons that we have in this town that we're really proud of because we're providing service for zero to a hundred plus ages across the town. The library visits, it's up thirteen point eight percent, so people are visiting the library, using the library more than ever. The economy is really difficult, people to come in there and be able to bring their families in and use the resources and attend the programs. Everything is free, just, it just continues to grow and become more and more important. Museum pass usage, I want to say that the entire museum pass, the program that we have is, provides discount passes for families, and that is sponsored by the Friends, they pay for all of our museum passes. Our in-house programs and our virtual events, those are paid by the Friends as well, or they're partially funded by grants. We don't get a lot of grants, there aren't a lot of opportunities for grants, but we look for grants all the time, the local cultural council, any, any way we can to subsidize our programs. But the Friends, our volunteer organization, pays for almost all of our programs and our museum passes. Another thing I'd like to bring up, the study rooms. We had our study rooms installed a couple of years ago. Charles Anderson left money for us, which we are, we're very excited about, we got them built. We just wanted to show this number because we just started keeping track, and it has become so busy that people have sessions, they have two-hour sessions. It is so busy that we are, we are keeping track in three rooms, almost four rooms now because they use our local history room, are used every single day. People are coming in to study, homework, collaborate, do business, do telehealth appointments. People are absolutely using these rooms and using this library every single day, we're really proud of that. And the other thing is, our library of things continues to grow. We think of it as sustainability because you can come in for anything you need, I know I've seen some of you in there borrowing things. They are items that they're one-time use, you know, an air quality monitor, it could be, we have sixty-five things-
Leaf blower.
Leaf blower, just things that people can come in and use. They don't end up in the landfills, they don't cost people money, and it's, the taxes paid for it, people are loving, loving our library of things collection.
Yeah, I think our library, our collection started off with two items in twenty twenty-one, and now it's up to sixty-five items, so we get recommendations from the town's people all the time, just like stuff that they're like, you know, I'm not sure, like I don't want to pay for this, but I want to try it out, and like it'll be used to other people. And it's really exploded over the last three or four years.
Absolutely has, yes. And then ending one hundred and fifty years of community history, we'll be celebrating this year. The library building itself is a hundred and fifty years old, so stay tuned because we are planning a birthday curated history exhibit kind of, kind of celebration involving this direction, society and everything, so we're really proud of that, so we'll be planning that for October. So that is our presentation. How many answer any questions?
Questions?
I'm looking forward to the birthday, the, the study rooms, I've been in a few times and every single time they're packed.
Yes.
Especially working from home, I think people are using them, using them as their home offices, which is great. So come on, wait a second.
Yes, thank you.
So how does that work? Do you, do you sign up for it? So do you want to-
Yeah, so we have the three study rooms that were built, the Charles Anderson study rooms that were built. You, those, you don't book in advance, those are kind of just like drop-in, because we want to make it equitable for people, we don't want, we, A, don't want people spending like all day in there, sort of like monopolizing the space, that's not really what we're about. But you can sign up for two hour slots, and then if there isn't anyone behind you, you can keep signing up for like hour slots. And then our local history room, which is full of all of our local history, we've also started using that as like a telehealth room, because it's really the only private space we have in the building, because the study rooms don't reach the ceiling. So people can, people can book the local history room up to a week in advance if they have like a telehealth appointment, Zoom meeting, whatever. Interview. Yeah.
Which floor is that on?
It's actually, it's actually right next to the study rooms. It's kind of tucked in the back. Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Larry, oh, I, my wife is a huge patron, she's just loving it, she brought me in, so I got metal.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think you, Eleanor, and are you services there as well?
Absolutely.
And you have the kids come there as well at the library, right? So that's, that's another landing spot for them as well, which wasn't very clear until just recently, so thank you.
It's been an excellent partnership, it actually works very well.
Yeah, yeah, but that's really good to have the kids in there as well.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More often, it's in my wallet.
You're welcome every time.
Just as far as the museum passes and in-house programming that's basically donated services, what's the value of that? Again, this is your budget, but those are services that are provided, that are, what's the value one about, you know?
I'm not sure of your question, I'm not sure. I can answer that.
How much value, in other words, you know, what's nine hundred and two passes cost contributors to give, you know?
Yeah, so it's kind of, each pass is different. So some pass will give you like discounted, like half price to the aquarium.
No, they do, I'm just wondering, how much money is that?
Like what's a dollar amount?
Friends library.
Oh, how much is it costing them? So I would say the museum passes that they are currently sponsoring for us come to over six thousand dollars a year, and that's what they've been paying for. And we have seen, and we check them every year to see if they're being used, and sometimes we get rid of some and, and add new ones, but it's, it's around six thousand dollars, the Friends supply those for us.
And again, the, the, it bears my-
That, that buries also by year because we always, we try to, there are other libraries that have things as well, and they'll ask us if we want to collaborate with them, so it becomes much less expensive, but that's a few thousand dollars. It's a great question, I'm happy to get those numbers for you, I'll have them with me, but it is, it's thousands of dollars, I can tell you, that I know.
It's not even thousands of dollars.
It is thousands of dollars, yes.
The other thing is, could you just briefly elaborate that if we fall below the benchmark, what happens?
Yes, yes.
What happens to my library?
As far as, as being, to be certified, we have to meet all of those requirements. If we don't meet those requirements, we are in danger of, we would not be eligible for state aid, and state aid is not guaranteed, it's a different amount every year, but it does help us, it's for all of the things that aren't in our operation budget that we can use in the operating budget. And we could also be decertified, and you don't want to be a decertified library, our patrons would not be able to use any of the resources in any of the thirty-six other libraries, there'd be no ILL, there'd be no transferring, so both of those things would happen if we don't meet the requirements.
When years passed, we were at risk?
Yes, yes. When you said, like, did you ask the question, like, why, what makes you not sleep at night? That's what makes me not sleep at night, because we currently already use state aid to, you can use state aid to pay for your materials, and the Friends help us out tremendously as well, and that's how we're able to meet these requirements.
Thank you, you said all that you're doing, it's thriving.
It's thriving.
It's thriving, so.
Yes.
Mr.-
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, so I have one last question, Mr. Larry, do you guys know what those requirements are that would get us below? I'm sorry, I might have missed that, is it patrons?
Yes.
Is it there with patrons?
It doesn't have to do with patrons or a certain, yeah, certain requirements we have to meet, yes. We have to spend a certain amount on, on materials, our budget has to be above a certain limit, and we have to stay open a certain number of hours. Also, the director has to have a master's degree in library science, or others, ones that we already have, the reason, these are the ones that could vary, that scare us, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Well, thank you, I just have one question.
Sure.
When you, when you get the active chart, does that include anyone that signs in through, what's that like, my son or my son-in-law?
Look, yes, yes it does.
Because I think you have to put in your library card, so that-
That counts as well.
That counts, and that, is that one of those programs as part of the, when you're certified, part of that like network?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yes, that's, that is all part of it, being able to access.
That's, I mean, that's the only reason that I don't throw them out on Ninety-Three North every time we go skiing, so it's very appreciated, you know, those books are unlimited as long as it's an internet connection.
We're happy to help our family.
You know, yeah, no, but it's, it's like, you know, it's, it works well too, because it's not, you know, I mean, it can get, if you're reading all the time, it can get expensive.
But, yes.
Right, it can.
Yes.
I mean, and then also some, I mean, for kids especially, or for anybody, like sometimes the, you know, the two-page like either prologue or ending that they let you read if you're like on Amazon books, it's not, it's like, all right, so now I gotta go spend like twenty-five dollars just in case everything turns out to be as good, so no, that's great, so.
So don't spend the money, come to the library.
I definitely do. Most of the time, I mean, at least I'm getting to read. Turns out to save your lives.
Right.
Yes, you are. Yeah, yeah. Turns out it did. Oh, it saved you. Yeah, so, well, no, but thank you again, I, I know that, I know how valuable it is and how, you don't think it's for everyone, but then you find out how many people of all ages use it, you know, for a lot of things, just even something to do, that's the big thing, like even, a lot of people probably using these rooms, you know, I mean, they probably don't all run a fun house like me, so there's probably some quiet somewhere, and, and, but you still want to be there just because you don't, I mean, even if you work from home, you don't want to, being home all day is, is tough, like sometimes you gotta get up, so.
We hear that a lot, yes.
So, well, thank you, and thank you for your time so late.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to present, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Do you want me to stay or you want to go?
I'm signing my library card. I'm moving in my own.
Okay.
I'm usually checked out.
I'll just be behind you. I'll jump up.
Do I have the space part, do I change?
No, no. You have to use this little arrow, I don't know how else to do it.
Get the arrow. If you don't want to say, watch, if I lose, you're crushed. Right there. All right. Thank you. You've got on the highway, you've been in four ninety-five. There are three exits. Don't go over. All good. Good evening.
Do I need to be louder?
No, I think you need to be louder. I'm moving in. All right, good evening, Department of Veterans Affairs, my name is TJ Tedeschi. We'll see if this works. All right, retired major, veteran service officer, I just wanted to tell you about my team, Catherine McLaughlin, my administrative assistant, and I, I really have a very robust team that, that allows me to do my mission for this community, the municipality. The VEC, Veterans Events Committee, it's filled out by Rich Stridden, the chairman, Debbie Aldrich, Roberta Sanchez, John Watson, Ken Ravioli, Michelle Reed, Stephen Shilah, he's brand new, Loretta Martinez, and Leanne Gonzalez. You have four hundred and ninety-five veterans within your town, and this year, we're looking to, within the census, it's going to ask about the spouses and the widows, and that's going to help me identify further who I can serve within the population, because we hadn't done that in the past, okay? So I'm going to be able to get a little more granular with how I, how I serve. Also wanted to send a special thanks out to the VFW, the militia, the senior center, they are my right hand. I couldn't do it without Kim, Pat Fillmore, Rita, of course. There's a whole bunch of people, a team, who work and care for the veteran population, they're unsung, and Lil, of course, I couldn't do without her. So thank you, thank you very much. All right, so the twenty twenty-four accomplishments, to date, we'll start with three, outreach, 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 that's the only way I can fulfill my mission. I have met with eighty-six individual meetings plus group events. Now I spend with, in my individual meetings, about two to three hours per client, because every veteran has a story to tell. You can't rush their stories, you have to let it unfold on their time. That's something, as a veteran with twenty-one years in the Marine Corps, you know, I say it, I have three wars behind me, and I've touched, you know, about thirty countries, and they're, they're experiences, right? And, and they're all trauma, and, and so when that door opens, everyone has a story and they want to tell it. And, and for me, I have to take notes and listen, because the devil's in the details, and my job is to listen, because they don't, it's going to unfold, and they don't really know what they're saying, and then I'll repeat it back to them, because they don't know what they, what they don't know. And as knowing the VA, you know, I'm able to, to wash it out and get them benefits that they just really had no idea, that they knew were coming to them. And it's really working for this community. You have a very diverse community within your, you have a very diverse veteran community within your town. You have World War II, Korea, Vietnam, you have your global war on terrorism. Numerous wars all fall under this new thing called the PACT Act, and that's your promise to address comprehensive toxics. It's scary, how many things people like myself were subjected to, and I have to be the resource to know all about those things. So Catherine, my assistant, I have to spin her up constantly on what's the latest and greatest about what, when somebody walks through this door, we have to be the resource that we have to know, because when these people walk through, they're scared, and they want to know what's going to happen to them. And I don't know is not the answer that they, that they want to hear from us, okay? So Catherine, my assistant, I have to spin her up constantly on what's the latest and greatest about what, when somebody walks through this door, we have to be the resource that we have to know. Because when these people walk through, they're scared. And they want to know what's going to happen to them. And I don't know is not the answer that they, that they want to hear from us, okay? So there's a lot going on, as you're well aware, if you turn on the news. State and federal assistance beyond chapter one fifteen. Currently, you have ten chapter one fifteen clients on your walls. But we help with fuel, with the pantry, with education, with burial, with housing, with nonprofits. We help with everything. And on top of that, you know, I got here in September, and then we threw a really big party, a Bob Hope V S O breakfast, with a hundred and eighty-nine veterans in November. And then four days later, we hosted a Veterans Day ceremony. So September, October, November were very busy times for us. The next month, we had Reach Across America. And on top of that, every Thursday, we have weekly coffees with, with veterans, where we're having about ten attendees on average show up. And so far, we've done one off-site to the American Heritage Museum in Hudson, which went very, very well. And we made actually the cover of the transcript on that one. To date also, we've had an SOS breakfast. On top of that, in 2024, I've made a couple trips to the Royal View Nursing Home, where you have thirteen veterans that I've assisted with benefits. Catherine hosts a widows, a widows group every month, where they, they don't so much focus on trauma, but they focus on community. And, and they have, they play games. This summer, they'll be going to the beach. They, they focus on more on life after. And, and it's focusing on, on, it, it's really beneficial. And, and you can really see the growth of it all. I'm really happy. This past week, they had a psychologist there. And so it, it's a really special time for those ladies. The VA Medical Foster Program Liaison, this is something I'm, I'm really supportive of. Instead of veterans going into a nursing home, it's actually something where people within our community can adopt a veteran, someone they don't know, and the VA will pay for them to live in their home. And so no veteran should ever be alone. To date, I don't know how many people within this community has taken that up, but I have that liaison from the VA in Boston calling me, and Kim. And so we're looking to make that become a reality, because no veteran should ever really be alone. And that's something I really like. And I pay, we do have a veteran from this community. His wife, Marie, comes to my coffees every other Thursday. And I go to the memory care clinic to visit her husband in Bedford. So he's doing all right right now. But communication and community in an underserved community, where less than one percent of this community is veterans, is something that we need to focus on. So those are your 2024 accomplishments. Are there any questions about those? Yes, ma'am.
SOS breakfast. My dad is doing SOS.
Isn't it delicious?
It's the best.
I love it. We had thirty-five veterans show up.
Yes. I've got a little chuckle.
I'll give you a recipe if you want.
Ah, is it gonna be my dad's?
It was so good.
What is it?
Shit on shingles.
Shit on a shingle.
Oh, okay.
Pretty much.
It's so good.
It's so good.
It's better than it sounds.
Don't write that in the minutes. It's so good. Just put SOS. People can rewind the tape if they want to know. She makes it good? All right. So for.
I'll take it away.
So your 2025 new initiatives. So maintain expanded outreach and social opportunities for veterans. I'm really excited about this new year. I'm stretching my legs right now. I'm starting to meet some new people. We're getting some stuff. I got this new, new thing called a dust-off. And this is for veterans to bring in something that they're real proud of and to talk about it. You know, dust off a memory and bring it in, because that's going to enable me to learn more about that person. And so I, I can, I can get them further services, okay? Because I want, what I want to do is when I have one veteran alone, they're alone. When I have two veterans together, they become buddies, right? And, and I've seen this before I be, before I served here, I served five communities in the Weston, West Suburban Veterans District. And one of the problems I had was getting veterans a doctor's appointments. I'm having that same thing here, where I have people come to me and say, TJ, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting to a doctor's appointment. One of the underlying things with this coffee social I wanted to do was if I can get veterans together and I get battle buddies, what we call them, then maybe they can start linking up and driving each other to appointments, right? And I can start fixing that early on. Also, something I'm really excited about is there's a nonprofit called an Honor Flight. It's a day where we load fifty veterans in to an aircraft and they fly them down to DC for the day. So I was on the computer earlier today. It looks like that's going to become a reality in late, late nineties, early two thousands. I was lucky enough to be on Marine One, where I flew President Clinton and President Bush. And I still have some, some, I know some people in the White House. So we'll get down there for the day and get some access to the White House. So I'm looking to, looking to get fifty veterans from here down to the White House for the day. That's something I think is going to happen soon. The next thing was an intergenerational tech support for veterans. I wanted to bridge that gap. The VA came and said, hey, look, we're getting away from paper and everybody's got to use a smartphone now to access your medical records. Well, that doesn't work for everyone, but the high school has these, has a tech group. So I talked with Kim, and after school, we pulled them up to the senior center. And we had them load all, all apps onto everybody's phone. And they're there three days a week. And, you know, they're earning extra credit and all this great stuff. And, and they're meeting the veterans and, and we're, you know, we're paving a new way. We're, we're bridging a gap. We're looking to start a book club. Already had a meeting with the library. And, you know, and they can pull in a whole bunch of books for us. That's something real nice. Quarterly field trips every three months, like I spoke of. The next one, we're looking to go to the port of Naval Shipyard, which will be good. And what we're doing next is we're going to dress up the town common with eight flag poles, off, eight American flags off of the, off the telephone poles downtown. We've spoken with the D P W, and that's something in the works. Does everyone here know about that? Okay.
It was going to be in my board member report tonight, so you guys are off the hook. I don't have to talk more.
It's going to look really nice.
It's going to be awesome.
Yeah, so, so it's going to be really nice. We're looking at doing a veterans' run in the fall, prior to the Turkey Try as a warm-up. I figured that was a great way to get some money in my veterans discretionary fund. Because I have some people that have needed water heaters, that have needed some things fixing around the house. And I didn't have the money in, in an account. So what I wanted to do was bolster an account. And the best way to do was to raise some money, okay? Secondly, how I could do that, it was twofold. I wanted to introduce a younger generation, not only to veteran services, but I wanted to get them to more events. Because the events I've held so far, they were thin. There weren't a lot of people there. So I thought, how better could I do that than hold an event where I have younger people there and invite them there to Memorial Day and to Veterans Day? So let, let's get that, let's get that done. I had Beth Steele and Liam Steele, who's an Eagle Scout, in my office earlier today. And the Eagle Scouts are actually going to help me do that, achieve that mission. So I'm going to be using them. Because those, those type of people, the Eagle Scouts, they're going to be somebody of importance. They're going to be the ones that go to West Point or the Naval Academy or the Air Force Academy, Coast Guard Academy. And I'm the guy that's going to be able to get them a letter from a congressman. So I'm going to help them pave those, that type of way. And this is a project that will help them do that. So I wanted to put something tangible in, in, in their way to help them achieve that. Also, the new initiatives, I've gotten a Veterans Corner in the transcript paper. So now that's kind of my command and controls, where if I have something to say to your community, I can just put it in the transcript and everybody can read it, okay? So Maureen's helping me with that. Last week, I had a, an information session with Martin's Landing. You have thirty-nine veterans over there. Thirteen showed up. I imagine the rest are in Florida, maybe, or something. So. And something that was very exciting that just fell in my lap earlier today. I had a Bob Hope U S O-style breakfast, and I invited a comedian to it. Well, she called me today and she said, TJ, I got something for you. I want to offer you a free improv class to your veterans. I want to come teach improv to your veterans. Would you like that? And I was like, absolutely. I got some really funny people. And so she's going to come here and I'm going to offer improv to, to the veteran community. And so, because you can't heal, you know, healing through laughter is the best medicine, right? So, and, so that's what we're going to do with that. So you're probably interested in this one probably the most, the budget statement. If we could start at the bottom, the postage increase for additional direct outreach. I sent more mail this year, all right? I wanted people to know who I was and I invited them to more, I invited veterans to more things. Next thing, travel increase to attend conferences regularly. I brought Catherine to two conferences. There's two that go a year. I needed her to get education. Like I said, I put communication and community, but I needed to put education, communication, and into the community. I needed Catherine to know face with names, and I needed her to know the Executive Office of Veterans Affairs. I needed her to be dangerous at her job, especially when I'm, when I'm on vacation. And, and she, she's a resource. So the next bullet, staffing needs, need, they, to maintain outreach level and meet with veterans uninterrupted, increase admin assistant from nineteen to twenty-four hours a week. What does that really mean? Well, here, here's, here's my ask of you. So my job is difficult. As I said, I met with eighty-six people. Eighty-six people. Now outreach has been something, and I've been on the cover of two of these transcripts. And I don't know if you, you've seen this lately, but they did an article on, in the Red on me. I'm not used to this. At twenty-one years in the Marine Corps with silent service, I never wanted my name in anything. So this is very foreign to me. But this is getting me a lot more people knocking at my door and calling me. And when I give people two to three hours to tell me their story, and it's very traumatic, and it comes with a lot of tears, and I'm, and Catherine's not in my office, and I have people knocking on my door and my phone continuously ringing, it's very hard for the veteran of your community to tell their story. So that extra five hours would really help me do my job. And, and that's why I just say that respectfully to you. Because it's very, very difficult for me to have to keep answering the door, answering the phone. And, you know, because we are a very busy department now. We're extremely busy. And, and she, she's a huge part of my team. I have her very busy, planning a lot of things now. She is a huge part of my team. So, and the public has increased. They know I am available. And, and I'm, I work all hours of the day to meet mission. So are there any questions of me?
Thank you, TJ.
Yes, sir.
Awesome, actually. Your first couple entrance slides were really touching, so thank you. Acknowledging your, your team as well. Sue Hu is in your position, did a tremendous job, and you had big shoes to fill. Everything I've heard from the, heard from the community about you has been positive. And that's why you're in multiple transcripts and the writings. You're doing a tremendous job. And thank you. There's been a few, if not handful, of times I've stopped in Town Hall after work of the past month or so, just to check Town Hall, see who pulled papers, more along lines of that. With Town Hall being empty, Mr. Gobert is usually here. I hear your voice every time, walking through this door, going that way. You're always here late, so I, I appreciate your work. I can, I can tell that you're working hard. And I think these veterans and the widows, what you're doing, they look to you for comfort. And that must be complimentary to you. And Catherine, your, or your assistant does tremendous job as well. So just want to say thank you. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. But you know what? I turned fifty in May, coming up. And at fifty years old, I, I didn't want to have expertise in military trauma, trust me, right? But this, these are the cards I was dealt, right? After serving, right? Who, who would have known? At six years old, I wanted to be a Marine, you know, and now, like I said, I turned fifty. Who would have known what, what orders I would have followed and what, what the country, where the country would have gone, right? But this is, this was, this was where I, I needed to be with my expertise, right? Because this was the right answer, to take care of, to take care of the community, so.
I have a grandfather who served in Korean War and World War II. Love him, miss him to death, but he never took any of these services up while, while we lived in Wakefield. But I certainly wish he would have. He would have had a lot of comfort, so thank you.
First of all, thank you for your service. Absolute, Catherine's awesome. You have a great committee. They're so dedicated. And I just, I'm overwhelmed with what you're doing. I just can't thank you enough. From a military family, so it's dear to my heart. And I just, I'm excited to see what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm just a two question, two, one question, one comment. One is, I remember Sue Magar, I think at one point she was saying the population of vets in town were about eight hundred. Has it been decreasing? I know it was higher than five hundred, so is it? Do you have any, any reason why it might be decreasing? I'm just curious.
When, when I pulled the, the files from the town clerk, it was four hundred and ninety-five.
This, this year? But I mean, in years past, any idea? No idea.
No, no idea.
I think it was higher. It's going down. The second thing is, you know, I'm, I'm quite a psychotherapist and for trauma, E M D R is, and a scientific, you must know all of that, right? Yeah, our severity, I don't have to say anymore.
Absolutely.
Yes, it's a very effective scientifically proven way of getting through trauma.
It is.
In a very efficient way of doing it. And that sounds like what your aim is, so.
We're, we're so lucky to be, have a VA in, in, near Boston, because we have the best doctors. And they, you know, they volunteer, well, they, they work for the VA one day a week. And, you know, and, and there's deals made, right? And, and so we have the best coming to work here in Bedford and, and Jamaica Plain and, and West Rock, so.
We're fortunate.
Absolutely.
Glad to hear you say that. Good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Larry?
Yeah, no, thank you for your previous service, your current service, and the service you've got to apply going forward. Because we're very fortunate to have you here. We're excited. We're excited to be, to be here to come. Fruits of our labor and his suggestion. I mean, he's got the right guy, it's certainly paying off. The press, the feedback, the outreach, and again, the response, which is even more important. Your outreach is really reaching people. And I wanna see this guy back over here do the improv.
That's what I want, that's what I saw.
Pretty good over there.
Yep, we're looking.
You're really good, you know. If you can get anybody improv, it'll be great.
Still here.
I know, truly, TJ, you're doing a fantastic job. And I wanna support your mission. Because it's worthy and it's something we should be doing, should be doing for years. Take it up and run it with it. I don't know if you're gonna do the turkey trot or the, the race yourself.
Back in the day.
Back in the day. Just fantastic, all the feedback has been terrific. You know, we actually respond, it's even better, so it's only gonna grow.
It's only gonna grow.
Again, I've had some experience with family members, again, dealing with the VA. And first of all, the VA in West Roxbury has just been a wonderful facility. Resources that are there, but unfortunate people don't avail themselves of those services, even when it's presented to the bottom left.
Right.
It's people like you that are going to hopefully break through for them to get the money they need.
Sir, thank you.
I'll echo everything that was said without repeating. But what I will say is I appreciate your focus on outreach. I think you mentioned it several times, different points. And I said it in years past, just because I feel that not only is that grateful what you're doing for veterans, but some of the initiatives of getting other generations involved. Because in reality, it's been, at this point, one, two, three generations since somebody was forced to put on a uniform. And sometimes when the war's not close to home, they're, not that they are not taught for, but it's different. You know, it's a lot different when, you know, the closest you get to war is, you know, Western Europe. Just to be honest, on vacation, it's a lot different. So I think like that outreach, Sue used to do a lot to get it out there, that just to remind everyone that, you know, it's a... We get to argue about the MBTA Communities Act here every single Select Board meeting because of what someone's doing. It's a lot bigger than that, you know, but just to put it in that. So, no, I, I'm appreciative of that. But again, it's more that, you know, it, it can be taken for granted upon, from a standpoint of security, we have it. From, you know what I'm trying to say, from like a, you know. So, no, I appreciate that, cuz the outreach is, is huge and it's hard. And I can only, you know, I can only imagine how hard it is for you to have the, when you listen to certain stories, realize that, you know, you probably got another one tomorrow. So I can only, I gotta keep it level. So I can be level for the next person, cuz that, you know.
Every day is hard.
Yes, that's.
Every day is hard for me.
So, so we appreciate it. And it was big shoes to fill, like Mr. Massey said, and, you know, it's just, yeah, it's pretty impressive just from a standpoint of, you know, it's a great John description. So, well, thank you very much. Hopefully, your first meeting tomorrow is not too early. Sorry about the time.
No, it's all good.
So.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't make that out of the way more. Don't worry, this is the only way to make it work. I'm gonna go so fast, record speed. So I'm Alora Richard, Youth Services, and this is my 2026 presentation. So as a review of what's happened in 2024, Youth Services has run two hundred and forty programs. It's just me, that's the whole department. I run two hundred and forty programs. And the most popular were the Reality Fair, mentoring, our intergenerational arts and intergenerational VACO in Conventional and Senior Center, Career and Health Support and Community Service Youth Group. Additionally, I ran a podcast club over the summer that was funded by a North Reading Cultural and Cultural Grant. In those programs, there were eight hundred and sixty-one total attendees. Many of those were youth who came back many, many times. So if we're just looking at non-duplicated, just how many kids in the community came, it's three hundred and sixty-two non-duplicated attendees. That represents about thirty-two percent of North Reading Middle and High School students. A lot of people who come to these programs don't go to the middle or high school. They may go to private schools or they may be homeschooled. So it's not perfectly representative of that number. Doesn't mean that thirty-two percent of those kids definitely know who I am, but they might recognize me. So I, along with programs, also Youth Services has engaged in community outreach. Things like the National Night Out, Town Day, the North Reading Public School Team Family Welcome, events at the library, events at the Burbank YMCA, across the community, and partnered with other departments and places to provide new opportunities, including intergenerational, intergenerational events at the Senior Center, planning with the Disability Commission, especially around supporting transitioned older youth who are disabled, utilizing school space to provide childcare at the town meeting, as well as the mentor program, and working with all the public services departments who have presented here tonight for collective tabling at outreach events, many, which I talked about earlier. Additionally, Youth Services provides a lot of resources for families. Youth career and college application support, first resume support, a lot of kids need help with that. Transition from school supports to state supports for youth with disabilities. That's a very difficult thing for families to transition through. And this is support that I'm really happy to provide to the community. Addition to caregiver workshops, mostly on positive youth development and mental health for youth and how families and caregivers can support them. So I'm hoping to continue to do what I've been doing and I have no increases to any line items that I'm requesting. And I just wanna keep on doing the coverage and services. And that's it, I'm done. Speed run.
Any questions?
I know, maybe more than.
No increases to the line item, but are there some, some things that you think we could be doing more or should be doing that, that you're reluctant because of the fiscal crisis that we probably could be doing?
Crisis, but I think that, you know, in general, I provide resources and services and programs to youth. There are certainly limits as a one-person program of what I can do that, where I can do that, when I can do that, and how I can do that. It's best practice when you're working with youth to have another adult nearby. If something terrible happens, someone has to watch those kids while you call nine-one-one. Or if someone has some issues and needs to have a one-on-one conversation, somebody has to be supporting them. I'm one person, so I can't do that ever. But most of my program is now run at the library or at the schools or at the senior center where there are other adults around. So they may not directly be supporting my programming, but I'm using their existence to make sure that I can provide those programs and services. It means that, for instance, I couldn't run programs at the senior center after four o'clock when nobody's there because there would be nobody else around. In the past, Youth Services has asked for another person in order to support that. Additionally, as TJ talked about, communications is so important, really getting the services and programs out to the greater community. And I can absolutely support for that. And those are two places that I know another human in the department would be really helpful. I know that that's not what's something I'm asking for this year, even if it's been asked for in other years. I believe I can continue to run these numbers of programs and services and I hope to even draw more attendees. I could expand to more people and different services in certainly different times and places if I had another person.
It does.
Yeah, so I know that we, we made it a plan to have the Youth Services Committee go from advisory to more participatory. Are you getting support from them on a volunteer basis to do your work?
I'm definitely getting some great support from my committee there. Lovely, lovely humans who have a lot of ability to support. A vast majority of my programs and services happen after school for middle schoolers and high schools, which end at three o'clock. A vast majority of adults are working at three o'clock. So while they're often able to give me support when it comes to communications or later programs, includes I'm running a job fair at the library and I have a lot of my, so can be able to help the best later in the evening, it's at six-thirty. But in general, they are able to help to the best of their ability. When it's not someone's job to be there at three, it's difficult to ask volunteers to be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's difficult. And so your constituency is like three hundred kids or four?
Yes, so I have three hundred and sixty-two non-duplicated attendees, but a hundred and sixty-one kids who came in total, cuz a lot of people come back, a lot. Which is great, it's, it's a good sign that they're enjoying the programs.
And how would you, I, I think I have my own opinion about who they are, but how would you describe that, the constituents?
In general, there are middle schoolers and high schoolers. I have much more high schoolers than I have middle schoolers, partially because the school's often need volunteer hours and I, I offer a lot of mentoring services, there are services with intergenerational programs. In addition, I do support youth as they transition out of high school, a very scary prospect. So that's, that, I don't know if that's answers your question, but.
Yeah, it's true, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in so long, Maureen.
I have energy, this is mine, this is like six P M. Not ready, but it would be people that need to be. I'm Millian Hart, I'm the Director of Public Services. It's a position that was new to the town two and a half years ago. And according to the charter, it's got, and some additions, it has about six departments that pre-existed me. Veterans Youth, Senior Center, Town Clerk, Collaborating Recreation, who should all be familiar from tonight. I also work closely with the Community Impact Team, which incorporates other players, the N is one of them. But Public Safety, the Food Pantry, Health Department are involved in those efforts. We sort of restarted the CIT Social Services Action Team, which focuses people who do case management of some kind with residents working together on complicated cases or issues where they want training or new resources. I support the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, which was inactive for 2024, the Transportation Committee, which was very active, and the Commission on Disabilities. I've become an ADA Coordinator for the town. If folks need help accessing services, programs, or meetings, they'll contact the TA's office and I'll be able to follow up. So just a quick summary of 2024. Talking about those social services providers, which again is my team plus some first responders and others. We did trainings for abuse reporting, hoarding intervention, burnout prevention, and health and financial planning documents. When we work with residents who don't seem ready for their next crisis and we know that they have had crises in the past, learning about the kinds of documents they might wanna get in lines that their family is more prepared for the next time. And speaking of that, on the website, some good ads in the past year are a Crisis Resources Guide, which you'll also see in the restrooms at the library and at Town Hall. And then a new button on the top of the Town Hall website. So if you, like me, get really excited about what a dozen committees are doing and when they're going to meet next, you can find that button on the top right now and subscribe to receive a notice every time the town clerk posts a meeting. So that, that posting requirement's only forty-eight business hours before the meeting. So it gives you that reminder just when you need it. Part of what I consider my job is to bring in as many resources as I can to support these many departments you've heard some, heard from. So I've been involved in grant writing and applications for several things in the year 2024. We received a state earmark for twenty-five thousand dollars. It was actually cut from a fifty thousand earmark. And we also received a vehicle through the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority. So the twenty-five thousand went towards a fifteen-passenger van that the Senior Center uses regularly. And we also received a wheelchair-accessible minivan that's valued at seventy-eight thousand dollars. So in the year 2024, we expended the first twenty-six thousand dollars of our Mastoc grants that we were awarded. And we have another fifty or so to use this fiscal year. We were just awarded funds to continue our transportation services through fiscal twenty-six. And in 2024, I helped write grants for the Facilities Department two ways. One was a follow-up to our ADA self-assessment from 2021. And with fifty thousand dollars in state grants, we renovated the Senior Center, including taking down a stage, leveling the floor, replacing the floor, adding a push-button operator. I don't think I mentioned here, but you've just recently approved funding that will allow those push-button operators to go in Town Hall and the library in the upcoming year, or hopefully by June thirtieth. And also, as division head for six departments, whenever there's transition, I've been involved in that. So in my first year, we had Youth Services and Senior Center Director Turnover. And this year, I wanted to thank Sue Magna, who served wonderfully for sixteen years at the town in North Reading. She did leave big shoes to fill and I helped arrange the coverage over the summer and helped in onboarding TJ to this position. So I'm pleased to be able to do that and to step in when any department has an unusually high need. Overall, my budget request goes three percent up. One is just contractual for COLA, basically, and I'll say merit. And the other is for office expenses. I believe that one of the software packages I buy for all six or for five of the departments, the price should go up. They, this year, they threatened, but then ended up backing down. But I do expect it'll increase next year. And that is a silly software, but it, it's very handy. It's Canva and many departments use it to make all of their graphics. So because you've heard from all of us tonight, it's really wonderful that it could be all at one time. I've tried to summarize and this may not be exactly the numbers from Maureen, but it's what I have to date. And this slide will be available to you if you wanna look in more detail, cuz it's a lot of numbers. But I wanted to show some sort of interesting facts about the budget overall for the division. Several departments you've heard tonight partially fund their operating costs with fees, grants, or they receive state reimbursements in addition to the general fund appropriations. Trying to quantify that. If we look at like fiscal year twenty-four, we were approved for two million eighty-three thousand in general fund appropriations and brought in another eight hundred twenty-one thousand in those gifts, grants, fees, reimbursements, to the best of my current accounting. And this year, we don't have all of those receipts yet, so it's, it's not the full number, but likely on track to do similar. And then decreased election expenses really make the division as a whole look great, thanks Sue. Thanks, thanks Town and State for not having more elections next year. Most of the increases you do see are related to contractual personnel, COLAs, merit increases, unions, and some known inflation in supplies and services. The one ask that's beyond that is what you've just heard from TJ, that as a division, we'd like to see increased admin support hours for the Veterans Office to maintain its current clip, which. for the Veterans Office to maintain its current cliff, which is quite impressive. I also do plan, because I don't have an admin, Eleanor doesn't have an admin, I plan to ask favors of Catherine if she gets any free time in the new five hours a week. And then overall, the dollars change, taking into account the clerk's reduction, is under $12,000 next year or 0.5% increase over this year's appropriations. And I think that's it. Yep. Any questions? That's it?
Oh. You know, four years ago, I had finished my study reading match gerontology, and one of the recommendations was that we become a teenage-friendly coordinator or director or something of that nature. And then I happened to be talking to Karen Marlin, who broke open the town charter and said, well, there's a Public Services Director position that's been open forever. Why don't we dispel that? I brought it to the board. The board immediately supported it, and we made the hire right away. So thank you for being the first person to take that job. I was doing the seniors in town, the two big things that they've always been concerned about is high property taxes and transportation. I was at that time, before you came on, I was representing MBTA and MIVA, or whatever they were called at that time. I was not the person to do that. You jumped right in and took that over and have created a transportation program options that we've never had before, which is exceptional. And it continues to grow despite a lot of headwind that you've been having in the place. So I give you tremendous amount of credit for that. I also thought it was important for you to be a member of the staff because Michael had so much on his plate that it felt like it needed to be, some of it needed to be taken away so that he could focus on other things. And everybody we heard from tonight is everybody that reports to you, which is also fairly impressive, as you summarized right here. Right. And so the point is, is that, excuse me, is that what I heard tonight, I didn't hear six years ago, five years ago even, is when I heard everybody talking, everybody's talking about cross-functional responsibilities. You know, I heard TJ talk about, well, I work with Elder Services and I work with this group. I've heard everybody, instead of being in their silo, which is what existed before, now all of your people are talking together, working together, and it's cross-functional. And that's called synergy. And synergy is how you make one plus one equal three. And that's exactly what you're doing. So I just want to say thank you very much for creating synergy in our town, for making us very efficient. TJ's nodding his head as I say this. You know, thank you for doing the role that you're doing. I know you're going to continue to expand on that role, but you're doing a fantastic job. And synergy is what you bring to the table, and that is the most important. So thank you.
Anybody want to talk that?
That's hard to talk.
No, just echo. I just want to echo it because, again, it hasn't been an easy task, you know, coming in, trying to coordinate everybody, and everybody was doing a wonderful job on their own before you coordinated it, and it seems to be working, and I think you're getting a lot more cooperation initially, and it's a testament to your persistence and demeanor. And you're doing a terrific job. And again, being able to coordinate all this and still hold the line a bit and deliver the services and get everybody to work together is not an easy task. You're doing a terrific job. I appreciate it. It's only 11:33.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for staying so late.
Thank you. I believe the Superintendent of Schools is still on the call to meet today. I think Dr. Daly is there?
Sorry.
You might just be able to give us a brief overview as to this memorandum of understanding?
I'll see you tomorrow.
See you.
Thank you so much, everyone. So this item is, this is for, it's a memorandum of understanding for foster care transportation. This is needed to see foster care transportation reimbursement for the state for fiscal year 2024 and subsequent years. This MOU is required one time and once approved. It's submitted as a document to be approved again. So essentially, when we have a student from the North Reading student who is placed in a foster care, they have, you know, there's determination to be made what the school of origin is and what the best appropriate placement. So if that student is determined to, the best school for them to attend is North Reading Schools, and we're obligated to transport them back to North Reading. And that can be for any period of time that they're in foster care. Last year, we submitted around $3,600. This is about a 16% reimbursement for about $600. So that's what we would be able to put in for for this year as long as we have this MOU signed with the submittable prior to March 7. So the school committee did approve this a few in our last meeting, last Monday, and we also need to like for.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Please turn to your motion, Spencer. And Dr. Daly, just to confirm, it looks like this seems to be approved but not signed by the board. I didn't see a signatory line on there for the select board.
Yeah, I didn't see that. Kind of a conglomend form, but if we need the signatures, that's something we can gather and have them.
I don't know. Perhaps we could just add to the motion to authorize the chair to sign in cases needing. Great.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and grant the Chair authority to sign the memorandum of understanding Every Student Succeeds Act Transportation Claiming under Title IX-E of the Social Security Act.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Patrick. You can now go to bed.
Thank you all. So will you look at the.
I'm a calling to skip, and I'm not going to because I'm trusting my colleagues are not going to go on any rants for item number 13 or 14 tonight. It's almost midnight. So Mr. O'Leary, I'll start with you.
So I ran first?
Yeah, you're running first.
I'm just going to give a, here, I'm sure, the water health, first of the year, I implemented their sustainable, health-sustainable food waste packaging regulation. So it's now in effect, and again, it's through cooperation of the local establishments, educational materials, and outreach by the water health director and an intern that we had. A long way to getting established to understand what was being sought and bought into. So again, it's the limited distribution of use of polystyrene food service containers and utensils by food establishments, and to encourage such establishments to switch to similar items made of more environmentally safe materials. So it's now in effect, and along with the increase in fees that they voted to help support their services. And the Health U Commission, again, continues to work on the plans to prevent to us proposals in relation to that facility, what can and can't, should be done and wish it wouldn't be done, so we look to hear from them. We're not just a future, have an article that's on the warrant for the public to consider. Cover from that, I will pass on any more.
Appreciate it.
Comments or rants or reviews that I might have?
Just really brief. A few minutes ago, I talked about the girls varsity basketball team, and I went to the game again on Friday. Unbelievable game. These guys are unbelievable, however they are. What's that?
The gals.
The gals. These gals. That's, that's integral. Anyways, these gals, these women are unbelievable on the court, and the game was super close, and they beat a team that they shouldn't have beat because they had lost to them previously. The team was very good, but our team just pulled it out. So they're playing in Pittsfield tomorrow. They continue on their quest for being those state champs. And this would be a team to watch because actually, there's only one senior on the team and the rest are in your classroom. So they're going to be back next year and stronger than they are this year. And it's just, these games are unbelievable, however they are. So I encourage you to go, as I mentioned before, if you're senior. Thank you, Mr. Massey.
I'd like to talk about the MBTA really quickly. I'd like to actually, yeah, continue the, thank yous and the kudos. I would like to congratulate a bunch of folks here. I'd like to congratulate the great Chuck Karucci for being named for the multipurpose field of his school. I'd like to congratulate Jennifer Vance on being named for these softball fields. I'd like to, congrats to the girls' basketball team, who are advancing to play in Pittsfield tomorrow night. I'd like to give a congrats, excuse me, to the girls' basketball cheerleading team, who will be completing in the States at Worcester on Sunday. I attended the boys' hockey game Saturday afternoon against Wilmington. I want to congratulate them on a hard-fought 6-2 win. I'm looking forward to attending Wednesday next game, First Stone at Wolvere, O'Brien Rink, at 7:00 P. M. Little League registration for North Reading closes on April 1st. So for kids of all ages, please do not forget to sign up. I am happily coaching again for senior league this year for North Reading players 13 to 16 years old. So I am looking forward to seeing a lot of familiar faces in hopes of running back.
Oh, TJ, my board member report, so I'm all set.
I, I, even if I had something, I'd call.
I'm coming around with something to sign.
Just one more comment. And again, it's just a compliment to the town administrator. I was so impressed this evening by the personnel at our, part of our administration who made the budget presentations this evening. So professional, so knowledgeable, so informative, and truly public servants. And Michael, you put together a terrific team. You owe them. You owe them. You should be very proud of them because they've done a great job, and you've put together a terrific team to serve people in the community.
Yeah, we're very fortunate.
Yes, we are.
Really are.
I don't toss and turn like they do because they're there.
Yeah, right. Exactly right. They take the pressure off because they do their jobs at all.
Despite our efforts, they make us look good.
Mr. Massey, can I have a motion to accept the gift of the North Reading Fire Department?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept funds in the amount of $2,878.56 for the Fire Department gift account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Just the gift was from whom?
It's actually an insurance payment that was from a very old incident in the city of Heavity. And the only way we could process receiving the money was accepted as a gift at this point.
We'll take it.
For the next motion, if I could just ask, if we could correct the department to read the Senior Center rather than the Fire Department. I believe that's how it was inadvertently written.
For 16?
Yes.
Okay. And who's that one coming from?
So that's a gift from Teradyne for a smoking carbon dioxide detector program to distribute to seniors in the community.
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept funds in the amount of $2,405.77 for the North Reading Senior Center gift account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next to Gilberto.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Great. Mr. Massey. Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Just, just one, one thing. Wow, okay. When, because you guys are on the finance, you do that. I'm really serious about Elder Services.
Oh, Finance Planning Team?
Yeah, Finance Planning Team. Excuse me. Yeah. I think we really have to do something for Elder Services to give them more. And I'm encouraged to see that, you know, the budget is less than 2.5%. But I think we just have to do one. I guess we have to. And we have to figure out how to make that happen. And I think the schools have interest in it as well because it helps support them as well. So I don't know how to make that happen, but I'm asking you to do that. That's it. Thank you.
All those in favor? Any to have?
Aye.
Aye.